Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, October 24th, 2022, 7:00 PM. We're in committee meetings tonight. All five of our committees meeting with a full agenda. So we appreciate your being here and your patience, but also your expeditiousness tonight with our items. The first committee is City and Safety Services. That's chaired by Councilmember McCary and joined by Councilmembers Grace, Swank, and Crowell.
We'll go ahead and get started. We have two items on our City and Safety Services agenda for this evening, the first of which is Special Response and Tactics Unit, APD Mutual Aid with the Sheriff's Office. And council members have received a draft agreement titled Between the City of Athens and the Athens Sheriff's Office for the Participation of Athens Police Officers and the Athens Sheriff's Office Special Response and Tactics Unit. This is providing mutual aid consisting of Athens Police Officers participating in the Athens, Ohio Sheriff's Office Special Response and Tactics Unit within their respective jurisdictions of the parties. It is the desire of the parties to this agreement to provide for and join in providing for mutual assistance and the interchange of their respective personnel and equipment. I see that we have noted Chief Pyle for commentary, but do we have him here tonight?
We do have Chief Pyle.
There he is, didn't see you over the podium. I'd like to invite Chief Pyle to share any additional remarks.
Thank you, Member McCary. Very simply, we were approached in the spring of this year by the sheriff and his tactical commander, tactical team commander, Commander Bryce Fick, to consider increasing our numbers of participation in their special response team. Currently, we have an MOU drafted, I believe, around 2016 and signed in 2016. I think that's the date where we allow five of our staff to participate in the SRT team. And so they approached us and asked us to consider increasing from five to seven. They indicated they'd had, and our records would also reflect that, that they'd had a time getting all of our officers to a call-out, to training, all at one time. And so their hopes were that rather than have five on the team and maybe get two or three to a turnout of our officers, if they had seven, they might get closer to the five that they had originally requested when we have a turnout. And that's for a variety of reasons, officer availability, our scheduling and staffing comes first. We won't allow officers to participate in call-outs for the SRT team if they're working the street for us, and by letting them go would nullify our coverage in the city. And so that was their request. The MOU that we drafted is essentially just simply raises the number. However, in discussion with Service Safety Director, and he and I agreed that we would make an ask of the Sheriff's Office where in the future, if we had need for Overwatch for a large event like Halloween, which we have had need for Overwatch in the past, that they would provide that service to us for free rather than charge us. In the past, when we've requested SRT for Overwatch for a major event like that, they have charged us their hourly rate for that. And so we agreed to increase the number to seven, provided council authorized it, if they would agree to provide Overwatch should we need it in the future for a major event for free. And they agreed to do that, and that's reflected in the MOU. So that is essentially the, that in a nutshell, the request in a nutshell. And as far as anticipating any scheduling issues, I don't, I don't see this as a major workload increase or a major cost increase for the city. Currently, we have five positions, only three are filled actively. And so there's, we haven't, haven't met the numbers that they expected us to in 2016 for about a year now. So I think increasing it would be a good thing. And our obvious return on investment is, is the training and the experience that our staff gets and the assuredness that if we ever do need a special response call-out here in the city, that the Sheriff's Office as a collaborator and through this MOU would provide that service to us. It's something that we could not have otherwise. Fortunately, we don't need those kind of call-outs that often, so.
Thank you, Chief. I think that was a great summary. Main points I heard were that this isn't going to detract from the service to Athens in any way because we'll prioritize commitments here before lending our officers to the SRT. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
And that a big gain is the enhanced training that the officers would receive that would translate to their skills here. And then you mentioned that this would not be a financial hardship for the city. Could you say a little bit more about any financial implications of this?
So currently, our, the SRT team trains once a month. They actually train every other week, but our members are only required to attend once a month. It's typically a four to six hour training. So we have the expense of four to six hours of overtime for those officers. We require them to do it on overtime. We don't want them to do it on regular business hours, again, because it would take away from our coverage. That was a baked-in cost that we knew about in advance before we signed the original MOU. And again, it's money well spent because if we send officers away to training, we pay them overtime anyway. So it's kind of factored in. And then on the rare occasion that they do have a call-out, either in the city or around the county, we pay, we pay our staff overtime for that as well. There are times when we have sufficient street coverage that we would allow somebody to go on regular duty, but that's extremely rare given the staffing issues that we have now.
Thank you. And I'll just ask one more question before opening it up to committee members, and that's just if you could give some examples of the kinds of activities or crises that this team would respond to.
Majority of the call-outs, from memory, that have occurred recently have been barricaded subjects, armed barricaded subjects, mostly in the county. They occasionally will do high-risk search warrant or arrest warrant service. They don't, they do not participate, and we do not participate in no-knock warrants or nighttime no-knock warrants, those kinds of things. Those are very high-risk. And the sheriff, I think I'm comfortable in saying the sheriff likes to avoid those situations as much as possible, so. But typically, they're drug warrants, that kind of thing.
Thank you very much. Questions and comments from committee members? Councilmember Swank.
Chief Pyle, by going to seven, will this give you greater flexibility in scheduling so that if you have seven people to choose from at any given time, you can still staff the streets and still be able to respond to a dangerous situation?
Yeah, so we prioritize our coverage and our predicted coverage needs. And I would also say that the MOU is specific that while we allow seven members to train, we will internally only allow five, maximum five, members to participate at any given time. And we haven't figured out exactly the internal mechanism to work that out, but we do know that that's how we're going to approach it. So if the sheriff gets a call, it will go out to all seven members. But I think our plan is just to coordinate it through a supervisor to say only five will go, and the supervisor will make the call which five of seven. I think it's going to be extremely rare that all seven are available, quite frankly, at any given time. And I think, I think it's going to hold true that we'll have three to five available at any given time.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you for being here, Chief Pyle. The MOU specifically calls out Halloween?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, and it says, "The Athens County Sheriff agrees to provide SRT Overwatch during any planned Halloween event should the need arise as determined by the City of Athens."
Yeah.
So is that something that you will decide the day before, or if that's an emergency kind of situation?
No, Overwatch is a planned activity, and it's for, we've used it in the past, for instance, when we had Halloween really close to the Nice, France incident where the vehicle ran the streets. And so we wanted armed Overwatch for all the entry points, the barricaded entry points, and we also wanted Overwatch on the, some rooftops as well. And so that's very specific kind of duties that are suited well to SRT members who are trained in that kind of thing. And so, so we've had that in the past, and we paid, I want to say it's around $800 to $1,000 per Halloween. We haven't used that for a while, and we don't have a plan for this Halloween, for instance. But if we do happen to have Halloween, I'd forgotten that we actually did hammer it out to Halloween specifically. Actually, that's the only place we've ever used Overwatch because of the geography lends itself to that being a benefit for us. And so if we, you know, Halloween comes back and its current planned state and grows, and there may be an instance where we want to have Overwatch in the future. And so that was our request of them, is that you provide it to us for free.
Okay. So that was my question really, is this is not necessarily planned regularly, annually, but given circumstances?
Correct.
You may need it. Because I know the city administration is doing a lot to try to make Halloween a little bit more
Correct.
controllable, and if we don't need this, then
Correct.
it's probably the best. Okay, thank you, Chief.
Other questions from committee members? Questions from other council members? Administration? Back to you, Chief.
Just a final comment that the law director has vetted this MOU. So what you're seeing has been vetted by the county prosecutor, our law director, Lisa Eliason. And actually, the sheriff has already signed it, but I explained to him that, once he signed it, I got back in touch with him and I said, you know, council has to authorize this for the city, on behalf of the city. So, so it's been kind of waiting for a while, so, yeah.
We would still go through our normal three-reading process?
Absolutely.
And any questions or comments from the audience? Okay, thank you, Chief Pyle. We'll move on to City and Safety Services' second agenda item, the solid waste contract modification. And do we have Bruce Underwood here?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Good evening, and myself, as well as Andy Vogt, the Psychologist and Board President joins us. If you've got any questions up there as well.
Thank you.
So hopefully you've received my communication through Mr. Riggs. One pointed clarification that I put out in that email about the request for additional funds for, basically, the cost overrides, the majority of that were from the cost of diesel for fuel. The $47,000 in the email was specifically for that two-year timeframe up to June of this year, so for the first two years of the contract. We estimated an additional $50,000 or so over the next 12 months for the last year of the contract. So that wasn't the only sum, that was depending on what fuel prices will do, what we expect over the next 12 months, from July to June of next year as well. So hopefully I can answer some of the questions, any kind of clarifications about, I put a lot of stuff in there. I think I spoke with Mr. Swank earlier last week. There's a lot of data behind that, how it got to some of those numbers, so wanted to open up and feel free to drill me on that, you know. As much clarification as I can provide, that'd be great. There's a lot of, a lot of details, a lot of variables that go into that.
Indeed. So if you wouldn't mind remaining here, I'll ask committee members if they would like to begin with any comments or questions. Councilmember Swank.
Since we spoke last week, I came across something that I wasn't really familiar with at the time, and I'm wondering if you have done this. As many of you know, there is all kinds of federal money out there for all types of businesses that have been impacted by COVID. And there have been cases where gas price increases have been loosely associated with COVID, you know, one of the many things that COVID affected. And this money is available up to $26,000 per employee. And I'm just wondering, have you gone down that route of looking into whether or not you qualify for that? Give an example, there's a restaurant here in Athens County that's down about 25 people and, because of COVID. And they're investigating it, and if they were able to get the 25 times 26 people, that's $625,000 they could get. Have you investigated that? And if not, I would be more than happy to put you in contact with an organization that is helping businesses such as yours work through this process to see if they qualify for it or not. And it doesn't cost you a dime.
Yeah, that'd be great. I appreciate those, those details. We did look into some of the sources of funding. From my recollection, it was, you had to have a significant impact on the operation overall, some percentage that you were in decline, lost revenues, that kind of thing, which made us not qualify for most of those. So if there's others that I'm not aware of, I'd really appreciate, we'll look into that as well.
Okay, so I'll get your contact information, and you guys can take it from there.
Other questions from committee members? Yes, Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, Member McCary. Thank you for being here, Mr. Underwood. At the end of your letter to Mr. Riggs and to council, you did point out that the worst-case scenario was walking away from the contract. As we look at the, at the next contract, I was surprised by that. And I don't, and I don't know what part of the contract, does the contract allow you to walk away?
I think there's a termination clause in the contract that allows either party to terminate that under certain conditions. I'm not
Okay.
don't know the exact language of it, but yes, there's a clause in there.
Okay, I need to look at it more carefully so we can, you know, be prepared for that if that is a, you know, a possible, if that could happen. I wasn't aware that that could happen. But I appreciate you saying that it's not something that you're considering. Thank you.
Thank you. Good question. Yes, Councilmember Swank.
You mentioned in your letter that you're down staff. How short are you right now?
I think we're down, we have five infant positions right now, and that's going to ebb and flow over the past two years. Been quite, quite the struggle, as many organizations have with, you know, getting enough staff. So we've been running pretty lean the last couple of years, just as a general, just because we can't get enough people. To that degree, you know, I've had supervisors in the field, I myself have been in the field when it comes down to it. With all the supply chain issues and parts availability and, you know, all those kinds of services being an issue, that's led to a lot of, a lot of overtime for a lot of people, which is not necessarily a bad thing, but we, we would like to get back up to that 100% staffing level. We have 46 positions, we're right around 40, 41 right now. So it's constant battle, you know, to get people and keep them, keep them going so we can get out there and do the services we need to do. We're running pretty tight, so letting, you know, having less people is probably not the answer.
So of those 46, how many of those would you say are dedicated to the collection of trash, recycling, and composting under the city's contract?
That would probably be seven or eight. It's not an exact number because there's so many different parts of the contract. You know, we operate four trucks every day in the City of Athens, Monday through Friday, and then three on the weekends as well.
So Athens is not the only contract that you have?
Correct.
Are you making similar requests of other contract holders that you have?
I am not, because our other major contracts already have fuel escalations built into the contracts. So it's an automatic, on a month-to-month basis. Fuel goes up, their cost goes up. If fuel goes down, their, their cost goes down. And so specifically, the Ohio University contract that we hold and the Athens-Hawken Solid Waste District. So there's a clear provision in the contract that's, there's no back and forth, it's just a mechanism in the contract, if fuel goes up or down, that monthly cost is adjusted.
So in our last conversation, it was a three-headed thing. It was fuel, it was personnel, it was capital. Based on what you just said, could we narrow this request down to just fuel-related increases rather than the other two?
Yeah, we could certainly do that. I understand the concerns with the labor and all these other things, the reality for businesses, all those things factor into how a business does and how it provides the services or goods. Our other contracts have provisions in there for some of those things. One contract has all those provisions in there, so that if, you know, any of those things go up, the cost of goods and services that we have to purchase as an expense, those go up, then the cost goes up, and for instance, in the university contract. So it's an automatic thing. And I think more to the point, I guess, is to get to the realization that, think about how the contract is structured so that we have clear mechanisms for these things. To provide a cost for three years or five years is quite difficult. As we've seen in the last two years, like, I don't think anybody anticipated that fuel more than doubled. So without any clear mechanisms in the contract to deal with that, I brought some of those other things up to clear, you know, to provide illustration that there's a lot of other factors to go into that other than landfill and fuel costs.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Yes, Councilmember Crowell.
So back to the contract, would you, do you find that those contracts, such as the Ohio University contract that have the escalator clauses, not only for fuel but for labor issues as well, that that is a better contract?
From our organization's standpoint, absolutely. I think we can give the best price because it removes a lot of the risk from some of those variables that neither party can control. You know, most standard, large contracts that, for solid waste that are multi-year, have fuel provisions in them, and others have, you know, other provisions as well for different escalation. So absolutely, I mean, it's, it removes a lot of that liability and risk out of there.
Thank you.
So follow-up question. I am curious what kind of pros and cons you could describe for the contracts that have that gas price escalation built in versus ours, which does not?
Should you rephrase the question?
Yeah, are there, you mentioned it's good for you to have the gas calculated on a month-to-month basis, but are there advantages or disadvantages that you see to cities that have that in their contract?
Some of the other clauses, like, for instance, in both the Ohio University and the Solid Waste District contract, there's a clause in there for the commodities value. So it's a rebate system. So if the value of recycled commodities goes up, then they get more of a rebate, so their net cost is lower that month. And if it goes down, it goes up. I think that's a benefit to both parties. With the, with the fuel, like I said, it's not, there's not necessarily a direct benefit to us or for the organization because obviously the price may go up, but it's about sharing that risk over time, I guess, is the long-term benefit to both parties.
And would you say that the alternative to that is what we're experiencing where you might occasionally need to just ask for a lump sum?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from, yes, Councilmember Swank?
This is something I had to do every year in the yearbook business budgets, and that's essentially what we're talking about right now. Our contract, which is roughly, what, $1.3, $1.4 million?
A little bit higher.
$1.5, okay, $1.5 million. As a percentage of your total revenue, what would that be?
It's about 30%, give or take.
And so could I assume we're the largest contract that you have?
That is correct.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Questions from other council members? Or comments? Yes, Councilmembers Bill and S.
Well, this perhaps is for, for me and those other people that aren't as schooled on how this stuff works, but how does the mechanism actually work to go up when the fuel prices go up? And how does, how is that calculated and monitored?
That's a great question. One of the most common ways is there's a fuel index that's put into the contract, either provided by the hauler in the bid or provided in the bid itself for all haulers to use the same one. The one that we use is, we use an index that's published by the Federal Reserve. It's a, basically the price of fuel for that, the average price of fuel on highway diesel for that month. And so since the, the cost of the contract is a certain percentage that is fuel, that percentage of the, of the whole contract goes up by a percentage of how the fuel goes up or down. So for instance, if the cost of fuel goes up and the, the cost in the contract of fuel is, say, 15%, that 15% is escalated, whatever that fuel goes up or down.
And that is my, beginning of the month or something like that?
Typically, the data is published the first week into the month for the previous month.
Okay.
So we're always billing it, we're always invoicing it over years.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that.
There are other ways to do that and calculate that. Some of the data I've provided to Mr. Riggs and Mr. Stone, basically, we average out our fuel usage over a 12-month period and say it's X gallons at the current prices, that's what it is. That's another way to do it as well.
Okay.
Yes, Councilmember Grace.
Just for clarity, if the, that index price of fuel goes down, then the cost to Ohio University or to the contract also goes down, right?
Correct.
So it, it doesn't just go up as the price goes up, it fluctuates with up or down.
Correct. And that's, you know, that's, you know, I don't think it's a budgeting issue when, when the price of some of these commodities that are needed for the services increase this much. You know, we, fuel's always variable, it always goes up and down, we see large swings in it, we see large swings in the commodities market, you know, from $140 per ton of cardboard all the way down to 25. So it's, it's always back and forth. So I think, you know, for something like fuel that we know it's volatile because of wars across the globe or what have you, hurricanes and things like that that are out either party's control, I think it's, doing it that way, linking it to an index that everybody agrees to ahead of time, is probably the fairest way to go about it.
Yes, Councilmember Swank.
You may have just answered my question. So when the contract is written, is a reference point, a base point for that fuel written into that contract? In other words, the next contract's going to start July 1st, 2023. In that contract, would there be a number? To remember Grace's point, should fuel drop dramatically below that number, then the bill to us should also go down?
Absolutely. I mean, I think maybe July is not the best date. I think whenever the, whenever the bid comes out, that should be the reference number going forward, so that could be the base number, whether it's $3.10 or $5.10. Because we won't know what's going to happen in the next seven months. So whenever the bid, you know, were to come out and was, bids were submitted from the other haulers, then that month or the previous month's price of diesel could be the reference point.
That could be quite a gamble, though. Fuel can swing all, either way, six or seven months.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the only benefit there to, to the mechanism that I, that I spoke about is, fuel's not the entire cost for the contract. There's labor and insurance and all those other factors in there. So it is, is a portion of it, but it's not the whole thing. But with such a large contract over, you know, a three-year period, it's certainly a lot of diesel. As, as the numbers bear out, it's, it's quite a bit of extra dollars over, over and above some threshold of normal inflation or something like that.
We have just a few minutes left for this topic. Do we have comments or questions from administration? Yes, Mayor.
Just a couple of questions, simple ones, really. Does HRC, do you, do you buy diesel in bulk?
We do. Well, we have a local provider here, BFS, that provides our fuel. We have a, one, one side tanks that we fuel up, so buying in bulk already gets us a little bit of a discount, but at the same time, it's still linked to the, you know, the global markets.
Yeah, so as you said, commodities and fuel, you know, are constantly bouncing up and down. You also mentioned labor and contracts, and I'm assuming labor doesn't go up and down. Labor in terms of its cost typically continues to go up.
Correct.
And so is that the clause that's in there? Is something that speaks to inflation?
The, the, the one contract we have that has the labor provision in there, it's directly linked to our union contracts, to our bargaining contract. Typically, those are negotiated every, you know, every couple of years, we're coming up one. The current one expires at the end of this year, so it would be linked to that, or any MOUs in between that would occur.
Director Stone? All right, Director Stone.
So the $64,000 question, Member McCary, is, are we, with our new contract, going to include one of these escalator clauses? And the plan is yes. Both escalator and de-escalator, depending upon, you know, what the price of fuel is at the bid. For the two members of the committee who are kind of on the working group as we put together the, the next bid, that is one of the provisions, and we can talk about that when we meet later this week. You know, really, the, the current contract, and you, you learn things as you do this stuff, right? And so the current contract doesn't have a provision for fuel escalation in it. To Mr. Underwood's point, you know, probably nobody would have, would have predicted, you know, fuel prices doubling when, when this thing bid. I, you know, I don't know that just an escalator clause for, whether it be fuel or any other price, is a benefit to the city, because what that does is takes all the risk to the city and moves the risk away from the, from the protector, potential contractor. I do think fuel in particular is a good one, to have the escalator and de-escalator clause. And that basically, it shares the risk and allows for us to avoid having the situation, you know, two or three years from now. The current contract talks about, you know, twice a year, us agreeing to work together if costs have significantly changed, you know, and that's, that's, that's pretty loose language for a contract, and we'd like to have something better than that, and I think we will going into this next one. So just to give everyone on the committees just a general concept, our goal would be to be prepared to bid the new contract beginning in latter November, with bid openings before the end of the calendar year. And the reason for that is so that we have a, an idea of what we're going to have six months prior to the end of the current contract for both setting of rates as well as giving notice to whoever would be the winning bidder to be able to prepare for anything that's different in the new contract.
Yes, Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, Director Stone, for bringing up, I wanted to bring up the point that the current contract does also have a clause, although it's vague, saying that we would work together as partners. Just want to make sure that everybody understands that that's in the current contract.
Right.
Thank you.
Then I'll just ask the clarifying question. Is the interpretation of that clause language that Is the interpretation of that clause language that, this is such a situation where costs have changed and that's why you're requesting money?
Correct. I would say so, and that's something we've never came to the city and asked before.
All right. Good to know it's in the contract, though. Any questions or comments from audience members? All right, well, that's all the time we have for this topic this evening. Thank you very much to you both for coming out and for supporting us. And that concludes our City and Safety Services Committee meeting for the evening.
Thank you very much. And, you'll excuse me, I'm trying to take notes at the same time we conduct the meeting, so multitasking, hopefully. We'll now have the Transportation Committee, and that's chaired by Councilmember Reisner and joined by Councilmembers Crowell, Ziff, and Spielness. Yes, I'm sorry, yes, yes, yes.
It's all later, I'm like, I'm like...
No, no, no.
Body first.
Sorry.
Okay, Transportation Committee has one topic, vehicle disposal for Athens Police Department. I spoke with Chief Pyle just before the meeting was called to order. He told me that the disposal of two police cruisers, and that was all the information that I was given. I don't know anything more about what, what kind or VIN numbers or anything, but this type of request comes up from time to time, and to dispose of city property like this has to come through council, and there'll be an ordinance put together where the administration will come up with some mechanism to dispose of the, of the vehicle and bid or donate to another police department someplace or that, that sort of thing. Would the administration care to speak to this?
Sure. There's two vehicles that we want to dispose of. One of them is a cruiser that has lived its useful life, and it's time to retire it, and the other is an unmarked vehicle. It too has lived its useful life and needs to be retired.
Any questions from committee? Member Swink?
The logical question will be, if these two leave, are we going to need to purchase two more replacements?
We will. You can speak to us, Andy.
So, so the cruiser is specifically going into the lease program, so, you know, the body remembers, we previously had a pretty significant glut of vehicles that were approved for disposal under the lease program and then ultimately were released by leased vehicles. So the cruiser will, will be in, in, in that. This is one that entered the kind of end of useful life since the last time that we did this. And then nine, nine, the unmarked specifically, we actually recently had a forfeited vehicle in a, in a case. It's a 2017 vehicle, so it's much newer, and we're going to replace the unmarked vehicle, which I think is a 2009, with the, with the, with the one that was seized through a forfeiture.
Members Ziff?
That, that one will not be a purchase, it's already owned by the city.
Right.
So it'll just stay tiled, too.
Member Ziff, I thought you had a question?
Oh, I did, but I believe Mr. Stone just, just answered it. I was going to ask if this was going to be part of the, the deal that we struck with Enterprise.
Yeah, for the cruiser specifically, yeah.
Other members of council? Member Spielness?
Thank you, Member Reisner. So as a person who keeps their vehicle until it doesn't go anymore, which is probably not the best plan, but it works for me, obviously you need to turn yours over before that kind of time. But I'm just curious, what, what indicators are there to, it's time for this one to, to get out of the rotation?
You know, basically, it's when we start looking at the cost of maintenance on that vehicle with repairs and transmission replacements and so on and so forth, there's a breakpoint where, you know, that, that vehicle has lived its useful life, as I indicated. And keep in mind, too, that these are all city street miles. This is not highway miles, so there's a lot of start-stop, there's a lot of wear and tear on basically all of our fleet, but the police cruisers in particular, we do hang on to them. In the past, we'd held on to them for a very long time, for a very long time. And we would typically retire something from one department and, you know, it was a hand-me-down to another department, to where arts parks and recreation or the engineering and public works would pick up a lot of the old Impalas or Crown Vics or vehicles of that nature. But again, with this lease program, for us to be able to use that as our way of doing business moving forward, it, it's great in that we can replace these vehicles every few years as opposed to every 10 to 20 years and stay on top of energy or fuel efficiencies. And quite honestly, I'd like to see a lot of our fleet flipped over to EVs. That's my goal, is to make sure that we continue to expand as those vehicles become available. Where we're really being challenged at this point in the game is, is every other fleet out there is being challenged with replacements is the supply chain and, and chips for the automotive industry is, is really setting us back unfortunately with a lot of what I would like to see us have. But again, the beauty of having a lease program is that we can, we can turn these vehicles over more quickly so that it has more resale value for enterprises, they sit there and work with us through flipping our fleet.
And to the mayor's point, or to put an explanation point on the, on the mayor's comments there, you know, the only pursuit-rated EV at the moment is the Tesla. Those are somewhat backordered. We're attempting to get, hopefully in the future, there will be more pursuit-rated manufacturers for other, other models that will be available in our lease program as we go to move towards that. To, to the question of when, you know, 100,000 miles is a pretty good marker, particularly when they're, they're city miles, like the mayor said, and, and you've got that, that stop-start and that, that running on city streets, to start really looking at. And really, if you, if you think about it, we've got seven marked cruisers as part of Athens Police Department, and until the city grows a significant amount of size, seven is about the right number. I gotta have at any given time four absolutely running. No, no, no questions asked because we have to be able to respond in that particular thing. So you can, you could have up to three that were broken or in the shop or getting oil changes, or maybe, you know, were in a crash and they're at the body shop or what have you, but we have to have four cruisers to be able to run. And so that's kind of our indicator, you know, it's, it's somewhat soft, it's not like a definitive, you know, this number of miles and this amount of maintenance per year, but it's, it's like the mayor said, you know, we look at it and we say, okay, it's time to, it's time to turn this over.
Okay. Thank you for that detailed answer, I really appreciate it.
Other question?
My question was answered, I was going to ask about the EV potential.
Logan, Ohio has two EV Teslas, two Teslas running, their fleet, so...
We have, we have cruiser employees.
We do have cruiser employees.
Is that it? Nothing from the audience, in case no one heard me, right? Well, that concludes Transportation Committee.
Thank you, Councilmember Reisner. We'll move on to Planning and Development, that's chaired by Councilmember Grace with Councilmembers Crowell, McCary, and Spielness.
Thank you, President Isley, and we do have a few items for discussion on the agenda this evening. And we're starting with a renewal of the discussion about the amendment to Title VII, which is our traffic code. And this is something that was discussed previously in committee, but in follow-up discussions with our Clerk of Counsel and Law Director Eliasen and myself, we thought it would be wise to bring this back for a little bit more discussion and just to be sure that there's clarity on a couple of specific issues. And several of those issues have been resolved through just communication in terms of clarifying some definitions about vehicle and when a bicycle or electric bicycle or scooter is included or excluded from specific sections. And then the other section that maybe requires a little bit more discussion and talking about is the section on towing. And so Law Director Eliasen has, has come to committee night again to talk about these changes a little bit more with us.
So just to refresh your memory on this, we've asked MuniCode to each year take a look at the changes in the Ohio Revised Code and then take a look at our code and see what needs to be updated. So they sent us a packet for criminal, and I think we have criminals settled, but we don't have traffic settled. We, in looking at the definition of vehicle, and Member Crowell actually did a very deep dive into this, so I thank him for that. He noticed that in the definition of vehicle, there was no mention of a electric scooter, which, as you recall, and I think, right, there were several councilmembers who did a deep dive into it, and I appreciate that. So there was no mention of electric scooters. So I went back and took another look at it, and there are two places that need to have the inclusion of electric scooter. One is the definition under 70102, that's of the Athens City Code and vehicle. And in addition to the list of motorized bicycle and an electric bicycle, pursuant to our authority, which we do have authority under 4511512A3, we can regulate personal assistive mobility devices such as an electric scooter. So I believe that you received the update on that, and then, so that is included in the definition of vehicle, an electric scooter. One note I want to make is the Ohio Revised Code and then our Athens City Code will exclude a motorized wheelchair or any low-speed micro-mobility device is defined in 451101 or a personal delivery device is defined in 4511513. And I think that maybe those were sent out to you, those definitions. But I would recommend that under vehicle, under the BBB, that we add the electric personal assistive mobility device such as an electric scooter. So there's one other place that that needs to be added, and that's under 70424. And again, this was pointed out to me, and I appreciate it. This is signaling before stopping, turning, or changing course. So in the list where it says operating a bicycle or electric bicycle, it should say bicycle, comma, electric bicycle, or electric personal assistive mobility device such as an electric scooter. And there are two places in there. But of note, the last sentence says a bicycle, electric bicycle, and this will be with our, our update to it, or elec, electric personal assistive mobility device such as electric scooter is not required to make a signal. If the bicycle, electric bicycle, or personal elective mobility device such as electric scooter is in a designated turn lane, and a signal shall not be given when the operator's hands are needed for the safe, safe operation of the bicycle, electric bicycle, or the scooter. So those are two places where that should be updated. And then, of course, we took another look at the towing, and the only thing that we're updating here is the towing from private tow-away zones. I, the only thing I needed to update was Section M, and that was to take out a reference to 70617. And under 70617, that includes other than private tow-away zones and just reference Revised Code 492125 and the Ohio Administrative Code, which sets the fees for towing. So other than that, I'd welcome any questions on, on towing.
Yes, Members Spielness?
Thank you, thank you, Member Grace. So in looking at the towing, there's a section, of course, I copied it and pasted it onto my thing, it says, if the owner or operator of, and I think this is 7.0, 7.0302, I think.
But... What section are you referring to?
That's what I'm trying to figure out, because, one second. Sorry about this. I cut and pasted this section, but I didn't put the number of the section on here.
70302 is attaching bicycle or sled to vehicles?
Oh, no, that's not it. Sorry.
702-32 is towing requirements.
Yeah. Well, can I just read this piece here and then I think I can explain what it is? So it says, if the owner or operator of a motor vehicle has been ordered to storage pursuant to Division A, one of this section, arrives after the motor vehicle has been prepared for removal and prior to its actual removal, the towing service shall give the owner oral notification, blah, 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 and then you get to pay one-half of the fee for the removal of the, of the motor vehicle. And then it continues to say, but I didn't find it in ours, I found it in the Ohio Revised Code. However, if the vehicle is within a municipal corporation and the municipal corporation has established a vehicle removal fee, the towing service shall give the owner or operator oral written notification if the owner or operator may pay not more than one-half of that fee to obtain release of the motor vehicle. So I, I did not see that in there, and I think that I would like to see that in there. And I had to go, you know, going through the law, and I'm so glad you're doing this and I didn't choose this as a profession, I have to go from one link to another link to another link until you finally find, you know, a particular thing that you're looking for. So I have printed that out, but I had, I unfortunately did not, wait a minute, that's not...
The section seems to be 7.05.31, private tow-away zones, and then Section C.
Yes, that's what I was wondering, too. It's if the owner or operator of the vehicle arrives before the vehicle is towed away...
Right.
Then, you know, the, the new language that would go into ours specifies that the vehicle owner or operator may pay a fee of not more than one-half of the fee for the removal of the vehicle.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Well, where that, where I drew that, where I looked at the original from that in the ORC, it has the additional sentence that I just read. However, if a vehicle is within a municipal corporation and the municipal corporation has established a vehicle removal fee, the towing service shall give the owner, so it's just, it's, it's that. And I can give you the details of that. I, I just found that this afternoon, Law Director Eliasen, so I...
Okay, I'll, I'll take a look at that.
Okay. And, and if I misinterpreted that, I don't think so, but I could have, but I would like to make sure that that is in fact in there, because everything else was. So I'd like that.
And you're saying that that was in the Ohio Revised Code?
Yes.
That you saw?
Exactly.
All right.
Exactly.
Sounds like we might need one more committee meeting.
Yeah, well, and then it, it then goes on to say, that fee may be paid by use of a major credit card unless the towing service uses a mobile credit card processor and mobile service is not available at the time of the transaction. I think...
That, however, is in what, Eliasen, yeah.
Exactly, and I'm grateful for that, because as we know, some will only accept cash, and this says they may pay with a major credit card.
Is it possible that the ORC, like that you were looking at an older version, not...
No.
Okay. Because it seems like...
I'll take a, I'll take a look at it.
Yeah, and maybe this is in a couple of different places, but that seemed to be the current version. But again, I'm not the Law Director, and so I will defer to your expertise on that.
Are there other comments or questions for the Law Director from members of the committee?
I will ask an easy one, I think. Can you tell me what BBB stands for?
Oh, well, our definitions start with A through Z and then double A through double Z, and then we're just on triple A and triple B.
Thank you. Thank you.
If I have an answer, well, I'm sure I will, I'll take a look at that, and it is possible that we'll be able to incorporate that in, and then, if that's the only question or only concern, then maybe we will have it ready.
Yes, Members Bielmas?
I would like to say that I'm happy with this change, having read the ORC before about what's in there, and because there had been some dispute about what the law says, I think this clarifies those, and because I have some things I still want to do with the towing ordinance separate from this, this sets that up, quite frankly, quite well. So, thank you very much.
Yes, Member Riggs?
Wouldn't this contradict what the PUCO sets as rates?
No, this is towing from private tow-away zones, and.
Not public.
Right.
Okay.
These are established with, you know, the signs that you see.
Yeah.
Have to have the exact language, and I think that most people do agree at this point that those are rates set by the PUCO, and that we can't set those rates. However, we can set other rates, and I think that those may be things that.
Well, I just want to make it clear to everybody and myself that we're talking, we're not confusing one with the other.
And it's very clear on here, private tow-away zones.
Right.
And we still have a section of our code that is amended with this ordinance, and this is one of the new changes, that says charges for towing other than towing from a private tow-away zone. So the other section of city code clearly lays out that it's for toes other than those in a private tow-away zone. So the new language references ORC and the codes established, or the fees established by the PUCO.
Well, that would make sense, because if it's not private by definition, it has to be public, there's no in-between here, you know, it's either one or the other. I hope.
Well, there are private property toes also.
That's still private?
Right, but these are very specific. If someone establishes a parking lot and has a contract with a tow company to come in and tow if somebody's parked in that lot, then it's controlled by the Ohio Revised Code, and then we can, we've incorporated that into the Athens City Code to make it very specific, and those are the fees regulated by the PUCO. However, let's say that somebody parks on your property, or on public property, then that's regulated in a different manner, and the tow fees are regulated in a different manner. We're only talking about private tow-away zones in this.
Are there other questions? Yes, Member Swank?
So on page 18 of this 19-page document, it says 7.06.17, charges for towing other than towing from a private tow-away zone. Are we leaving, first question, are we leaving that intact? We're not touching that section?
Right, we're changing the title.
Okay.
So we're making it clear that those are charges for towing other than.
Right, so we're not going to touch that, even though the prices, for lack of a better word, in here were last modified on January 1st of 2002. To give you an idea, we raised it to $50. If you run a, any Google inflation calculator today, that would be $83 in some sense, which is rather ironic, because I made some calls to various insurance companies here in town that have experience with reimbursing people who get towed. In other words, you go out in the morning, and your car just won't start. Some people have triple A, some people have that on their insurance policy, and so you call, you call a tow company here in Athens, they come to your property, they can't get it started, whatever, and they tow you down to Jack Alvis's place on Columbus Road. The ballpark figure that people are getting towed, or getting charged and reimbursed is somewhere between $75 and $90. So that $83 figure would be very, very much in line. I guess the point I'm making is, and this may be what you were talking about, we get this done, and then we come back and look at 7.06.17. Is that the plan, or to do it all at one time?
I'll leave that up to counsel. If we want to sever off this towing section, we can just enact the rest of it, and then work on the rest of towing, but that's the question, what are you going to do with the other charges, so that we can regulate?
Because I would contend that those other charges are way out of line. 2002, we talked about, we hadn't raised, what, trash rates in 10 years? We haven't touched those in 20 years.
And that's an issue that has come before counsel multiple times and has not had support to pass and change that. So that is something that I think needs to be addressed, but has created enough division and controversy, because those are the fees that counsel can regulate. So my opinion is that it makes sense to adopt these changes as they stand right now, because the purpose of this ordinance that's currently before us is to align with ORC. And that does this for the toes from private tow-away zones, which we do not have the authority to set those fees, and so it makes sense to do this separately, and then when the Transportation Committee would like to bring back the other towing issues, then I think that could happen there. But by changing the title of that section, it clarifies that those fees that can be set locally are for toes other than from the private tow-away zones. So that was, the concern was that we did not want to have a chapter of our code, a section of code that sets fees and then makes it unclear with the difference between the private tow-away zones and other towing zones. So I think by changing the title of 70617, while adopting these changes to align with ORC, that makes that separation clear, and then, as Member Bielmas has stated, she has a particular interest in working on the other sections of our towing within code. So my preference is to move forward with the ordinance as is, with the possible exception of that one section of language that Law Director Eliasen is going to look into. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and by and large, I agree with what you said in the interim, though what happens when someone does get towed from a non-private tow zone and gets charged more than $50?
What has happened is that they have the opportunity to fight that charge.
And where would they challenge that?
In court.
Small claims.
Small claims.
Small claims court, okay.
Yes. That is the option available to individuals at this point.
So basically, you're saying, let's do this, which I agree with, and then we'll get something together through the Transportation Committee to address the other.
Yes, that is, that is my preferred course of action, so that then we have the language to align our traffic ordinances with ORC where they need to be.
Makes sense.
Are there other comments or questions at this time, at City Administration?
I just have one. As we've talked extensively about towing over the last several months, and I want to make it clear that the City Administration does not relish towing people. We don't seek to tow people from public property, it's not something that we attempt to do, or we just go out and, like, search for people and give a reason to tow. If we're towing a person from a public property, it's for a reason. They're blocking a fire hydrant, they're parked in somebody's driveway, and the person calls the police department, and they can't leave. It is not a situation like you have where, you know, a private property owner has a parking lot, where they lease towing space, or they lease spaces to somebody, and they pay a tow company to come patrol and look to make sure that the license plate is, so I guess, and the only reason I bring that up is you, as you prepare to discuss what the rates are going to be for public towing, is, is I don't want to tow people, but when I have to tow them, I need the tow truck to come, because it's usually because there's a problem. So as you debate this going forward and talking about it separately, that's what I would ask you to do, but please know, contrary to what has maybe been said by some of the members of the public who've spoken about this issue, is there is not a predatory bone in the State Police Department or City Parking Enforcement's body when it comes to, you know, towing folks from public property in the city. That's all.
Thank you, I appreciate that comment. Are there other comments? Yes, Members Bielmas?
Thank you, Director Stone. I certainly, for myself, never thought that the city had that idea or was trying to do predatory towing. So having you say that is fine, but I certainly never thought that was the case. My concern is not how the city, or even how private property owners handle it, my concern is that we have towing services that are doing it fairly and honestly and following the law. That is my concern. Thank you.
Yes, Members Swank?
I did not agree more with what Director Stone said. In fact, the mayor and I are very aware of a situation today where we very well could have towed a boat, but we took all kinds of measures to find out who the boat belonged to, contacted the owner, and the owner very cooperatively, within two or three days was going to have the boat moved. That's how the city operates, and to paint the city with the broad brushes, going out and wanting to yank every car out of every lot, it is just not the case, just not the case.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to clarify?
That's a great point, you know, and to add to that, and I'll be quick, is that we also ended up towing a camper, pop-up camper on Morris Avenue, that was missing its license plates and had been sitting there for months on end. So cases like that, you know, clearly in an abandoned vehicle, or trailer, or whatever, warrants being towed. Still don't know if anybody even picked up that trailer.
Yes, Member McCary?
Thank you, I just wanted to ask a summary question, since there's a lot of information, a lot of law, when it comes to traffic, anything as well understood as what a green light tells you to do and what a red light tells you to do, but for the public, in terms of changes or takeaways or highlights, it stands out to me that the scooters are kind of a new way of understanding rules and perhaps some of the towing, but are there, I guess this is a question for our Law Director, based on your review, are there points of interest for the public in particular?
Well, if anyone wants to take a look at this, but I think it's just updating it to, if members of the public want to take a look at it, I think it's on the shared drive, or we can provide it, but it's just really updating, updating our code to match the Ohio Revised Code. And again, some of it hadn't been updated for decades, but we did get it updated, and these are just changes from the past year, so.
There are some changes regarding which specific types of vehicles are allowed to have different specific types of flashing lights, and that hadn't previously raised any questions or concerns, but it does spell out in detail what colors of lights are allowed on which types of vehicles, and that, and this is all clarifying language under the heading that flashing lights are prohibited on motor vehicles, except as a means for indicating a right or left turn, or in the presence of vehicular traffic hazard requiring unusual care in approaching or overtaking or passing. And then it spells out in detail exceptions to that. Are there other comments or questions? Seeing that, I believe this will likely be ready for first reading at our next council meeting, unless there are concerns over that one section, which Law Director Eliasen will. But I think we should be ready for first reading. Notes for our quick.
Uh huh.
Yes, well, yeah, she'll be preparing them. Okay, thank you, and moving on to the next item on our agenda this evening, it is amendment to Title 23 zoning code, and this comes to council by way of a unanimous vote from the City Planning Commission, and they provided to us some very specific recommendations for changing our city zoning code, and I greatly appreciate the work that has gone into preparing this, and what this language does is it provides specifications for accessory energy systems, which was something that was missing in our zoning rules within the city, and so with this amendment, citizens will have easier access to renewable energy sources, and as well as the, to be able to apply for Inflation Reduction Act solar tax dollars, and it allows our code to address the solar and renewable energy in business and open space zones as well. So there is specific language addressing roof-mounted solar, and also accessory energy systems that are ground-mounted in. So are there any questions? Yes, Mr. Mayor?
No, just a comment to kind of kick things off. You know, Director Riggs put a lot of work into this. I think council already recognizes that the City of Athens is a soul-smart city, which that is a designation bestowed upon communities that have kind of gone the extra mile to cut through the red tape for residential solar. We're currently bronze level. Some time ago, I asked Director Riggs to really take another deep dive into what we can do to cut through more red tape for the citizens. It's almost, it was pretty serendipitous that this all kind of aligned itself at the same time as the Inflation Reduction Act, which, within that particular federal bill, is a lot of solar tax credits, or renewable energy tax credits, that municipalities could take advantage of, as well as residents can take advantage of. So this is another step down that path to make it easier for our residents to install solar, whether it be ground-mount or roof-mount solar on their properties. It also addresses an issue that we noticed for the city itself with the other zones, things like open space, OS zones, or manufacturing zones, so this speaks to that as well. But again, I'm going to give a lot of credit to Director Riggs for, again, getting us down this path, and the timing couldn't be better for this to move forward with people being able to take advantage of the Inflation Reduction Act tax credits for solar on their homes. Director Stone, you want to add anything to that?
Sure, so I'd ask the body to look at this in really three different, three different blocks of information. The first one, in 2303, talks about when renewable or energy systems are being used as either accessories to a different use in the zone, so for instance, what you think of as roof-mounted, or something in your backyard, backyard solar. And then also, if you look at 230312, a press or a principal renewable energy system, and that's when the main use of that parcel is going to be for that system, and what the provisions are in each of those situations. And this speaks to solar, but it also speaks to wind and speaks to geothermal as well. You know, one of the things that we were pretty insistent upon is when it's a principal use, that a couple of the zones in our city that we don't have very much of are protected, so it's not converted entirely to a principal use of an energy system, and specifically that's a business or an industrial zone. You know, we don't want all of our B-zoned areas or our M-zoned areas in the city completely covered in solar panels, and then not being able to have any businesses that pay income tax that allows us to support city services. So you can do accessory uses all day, can't make it a principal use in those particular locations. There are some other provisions, specifically when the principal use is in a residential zone, it has to be conditionally permitted, that is to say, it goes before the Board of Zoning Appeals, so there's an extra check in those particular situations. When it's an accessory use, you can do it, you know, pretty much anywhere, as long as you do it within the confines that we've established here. anywhere, as long as you do it within the confines that we've, we've established here within the zone. The second section that the planning commission put forward talks about a couple minor changes, changes to 2404, and this is specifically some modifications to what happens in business zones. And it really is talking about outdoor dining. We recognize that, that outdoor dining is something that especially with the COVID pandemic, we really needed to do because of the, the, the need to socially distance. But, but really, I think we all understand that outdoor dining makes our city more vibrant. And, and the way that our zoning code was written for, forever, really made it hard to establish outdoor dining. So we went ahead and incorporated those changes as well as some modifications to the distance from an R1 zone that a, that a, a drive-through can be. And what we found is that all of the places in recent times that have, you know, been within 200 feet of an R-zone with a drive-through have gone to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and Board of Zoning Appeals has approved it. And so we've recommended, the planning commission has recommended to reduce that to 100 feet. And then the last section specifically is 2306, and this has to do with just kind of some cleanup of stuff that we simply don't do. And we believe this is some real old language in our zoning code about certificates and permits, particularly certificate of health officer. There is no health officer on the city staff. Not sure where that came from. It's been in there for a long time. We recommend it just comes out. Occupancy permits are issued by the state, Department of Commerce with a building, you know, building occupancy permit, so it's not something a city does. And then lastly, excavation permits are really handled by Title 27 in our land development as well as Title 41, our site plan review. So we don't feel as though there needs to be a permit in zoning permit. So those are the three kind of batches of pieces of information we're asking you to change.
Thank you, Director Stone. Are there questions? I, I think it makes sense to sort of ask or answer questions, make comments by section because they are very different. So are there questions relating to the energy changes for renewable energy sources? Yes, Member McCary?
Thank you. Seska, quick one. For residential installation of solar panels, is that a process that citizens would begin with zoning?
Yes. Yes, just like if you want to build a garage, you know, you would go get a zoning permit to say you could have that accessory structure, same thing for solar.
Thank you.
Just wouldn't require a variance or because their guideline's already in place.
Yes, Members Speilness?
Thank you, Members Grace. So, and, and maybe I'm being a little petty here, but I'm going to say it anyway. And that is, so under section 230, 230311, it says accessory structure, structures and accessory energy structures. Below that, there's a section for detached and a section for attached accessory structures. And so separately from that is the accessory energy structures, but some of the language under detached and attached, I think, conflict a little bit with the, the part about the energy, accessory energy structures. So I'm wondering if, take another look at that to see if maybe that's, the clarity of that is a little bit better considering it's a legal document. So because it refers to accessory structures under detached, and then it says you can only have, there shall not be more than one principal dwelling and two accessory structures. Again, this is a little bit petty, but I'm wondering if that could be cleared up just a little bit. I think that would be helpful. And I'm wondering that about, there's a place where it says roof-mounted AES are exempt from screening requirements. Screening requirements? What's that?
So in ground-mounted solar, there are, you know, it says ground-mounted solar exempt from screening requirements. We do have screening requirements when you, when you make changes to property adjacent to an R-zone. So for instance, if you make changes to a B-zone that is immediately adjacent to an R-zone within a certain distance, there's screening requirements. This would basically say, if you go and put solar, I'm trying to think of an example. You know, the classic example is, 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 you know, Simpson Avenue B-zone adjacent, immediately adjacent to the R-zone on the Near East neighborhood. If you put solar on top of one of those roofs, would that trigger a screening requirement for you to, to screen the adjacent properties? And this would say no.
Okay. I just wasn't clear exactly what screening in that context was. Again, kind of petty, but under four, wind-powered AES, section four, the word voltage is misspelled. Just a quick fix there.
Yeah.
And then, I'm going to skip that part and go back to this. Okay. Then under 230407B3, business zone, there's some gender-specific language in there, well, that ought to be fixed. And then it says, item one, all businesses, services or processing shall be conducted wholly within a completely enclosed building except for sale of fuel, blah, blah, blah. And the use is specified in paragraphs A9 and 10 below. I didn't see an A9 and 10 below. So, and obviously, we do have provisions for businesses being outside as well as inside, so that word should probably be changed.
If I may, on that one, Members Speilness, the A9 and 10 have been, you know, not included in this particular document that the planning commission forwarded. It's in there. I can quickly go back and look at the ACC to find out what A9 and 10 are. It just was left out of this particular document that was sent forward.
Okay, yeah, that, that wasn't clear because we didn't see it then, so that's fine. But again, you know, if we have, obviously, as we talked about earlier, we have businesses that are now outside as well as inside, so if that's clear somehow, that's great. Let me answer some of those questions. Under item C slash B, what's an example of a non-conforming legal use?
A non-conforming legal use would be a grandfathered use for whatever reason that was being used that way prior to the zoning law being put into effect. Another non-conforming legal use would be a, a use that was granted a variance for whatever reason through the Board of Zoning Appeals at one point. And then it's, so it's not conforming, so it doesn't automatically conform with that particular provision of the zoning code, but because it was either grandfathered before or granted a variance by the Board of Zoning Appeals, it's, it's legal and it's illegal.
Okay. And if you'll bear with me, I do have one other point, and this is not, and I, I just want to say, I'm really happy that you're doing this. This is great. I'm so happy that you are adding this in. As, as the mayor said, it's perfect timing to talk about accessory energy structures. That's wonderful. But I ran across this that I do have a concern about, and that is, and it was, it's not part of this, but I think as long as we're talking about this section, I think we need to bring it up. And that is section 23.0311, part A, item four, says no accessory structure shall contain permanent living quarters. My concern about that is accessory housing units are an important strategy to not only make more housing available, but also more affordable. We have a number of people I know personally that have garages with permanent living quarters above, which may be one of those non-conforming grandfathered in, but I think that now is a good time to talk about when and under what circumstances we allow accessory housing units. This is something that's happening all over the country. We should be, I think, on the forefront of that rather than saying we can't do it at all. This helps seniors to stay in their homes. This helps families have opportunities to help their grandparent or, you know, a child or whatever to have a place to live. And, you know, it, in, in many places, it's really working, and it's certainly working for my friends who have this. So I realize this would need to be carefully handled and under close discussion. And I'm not suggesting this is the time, but I, I don't want this to go by without having, bringing this to council and the mayor and director's attention because this is something that is going to be on everyone's radar and is certainly recommended by, for example, the American Planning Association.
If, I'll respond quickly if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, and then Members Speilness, I agree 100%. And this was something that the Affordable Housing Commission has discussed and passed. And it is, it's a big issue that requires a lot of careful planning and looking at it. But there, there was, just to be perfectly honest, there was a part of me that wanted to not introduce the rest of this until we could do that too. But I think that that will, that's a change that a lot of people will care very passionately about and that I think should involve a lot of open dialogue and conversations with members of each different community here within Athens, all the different neighborhoods. And so I, I absolutely agree, this, it's something that should be addressed. But I think that it would be good to go ahead and make these other changes now and, but I appreciate that you brought that up because I agree 100%. And that's something that I have discussed with, with our city planner quite a bit. And that's, that is a, a personal goal of mine to, to really look at that issue here in the city.
And I just want to say that, as I said, I understand this would, and I put this in bold in my notes, I realize this would need to be carefully handled and a lot of discussion had. I understand that, but I can't let this go by without raising the issue. So I'm hoping this can be, come up sooner rather than later.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
I want to acknowledge your comment. I agree. And I'm going to echo everything that Councilmember Grace just said. So, no, I, I, I agree with you. Housing is a big issue here in the city of Athens. There is accessory structures that could be potentially thought of differently, but at the sake of getting this legislation, these amendments moving forward to, to unlock that door for our residents to start thinking solar tax credits or renewable energy tax credits, you know, but I think it's prudent for us to move this forward. But I acknowledge your comments and agree.
I do have one other thing. I apologize.
It's all right.
But as a member of the planning commission knows, the University of State's HOA says we're not allowed to have roof solar panels. If we pass this, would that nullify that provision?
No.
I mean, three, if the HOA has their rules and guidelines, you know, and, you know, that's something that internally, those who are members of the HOA should take it up. If they feel strongly that, that they would like to be able to take advantage of these provisions, yet it's restricted because of the HOA language, that's something I think internally that would have to be discussed by members of the HOA board.
A little bit, if I could a little bit further, because we've dealt with this in a couple of locations, is, is an HOA can be more restrictive, but can't be less restrictive than a zoning, a, a city zoning situation. So, you know, in that particular instance, you know, the city can't like, that would be a more restrictive provision that the HOA hasn't placed through covenants. Now, the enforcement mechanism is through civil action that the HOA would take against a, a resident who would place solar panels in conflict with the, the HOA's covenants. And then you could fight in court about that. But you couldn't do a situation where the zoning restricted it, and then the HOA said, you know what, you can do it anyway. That would not be allowed. But, but to your point, that it, it wouldn't be allowed if the HOA says it can be. At least according to civil enforcement, the city wouldn't enforce it.
Thank you for clarifying that. Now I know what to do next.
And just to, to return to your previous question or comment about A9 and 10 as exceptions to wholly enclosed or wholly within a completely enclosed building. A9 is quite vague as it is miscellaneous trades and businesses at least 50 feet from any R-zone. So that is category nine, that is exempted from being conducted wholly within a completely enclosed building. And A10 is contractors' yards and related establishments, so building material yards, not including concrete mixing, contractors' equipment storage, those. So a contractor's yard, but A9 is miscellaneous trades and businesses at least 50 feet from an R-zone. So, yeah.
Well, that would make Cider House having their, you know, backyard bar area, that would make that illegal.
Right now it is.
Right?
Because it's 50 feet within R1.
I think they have a, I think they have a variance. I'd have to go back and check. I, I, I don't want to speak out of line here. I think they have a variance.
Well, that may be, but I'm just saying.
But in, as a principally permitted, or as a, without requiring a variance, yes. I mean, and that's all outdoor dining, really, according to our code. And now, I think we relaxed that. If I'm not mistaken, I wasn't here during, during portions of COVID, but there were some provisions associated with allowing outdoor dining during COVID. But, but yeah, I mean, there's a lot of outdoor dining in the city that, you know, frankly is, you know, we haven't strictly enforced over, over the years because of various considerations.
So it will be good to include that outdoor dining is permitted. So.
That's all I'm saying.
Yes. Yes, Member Swank?
Two quick questions. Says ground-mounted solar AES are a permitted accessory use within all zoning districts except the historical overlay district. I know what that says. I'm just curious as to the thought behind that or reasoning.
I, I can speak to. I think that the planning commission's perspective on that was that that would require an additional level of scrutiny in the historic, the historic district beyond just automatically issuing the zoning permit. So if it were to be a, a situation where the, I, I think right now our historic overlay has a requirement for review by the Historic Preservation Committee or Commission. And so it's, it doesn't mean you wouldn't be able to do it. It just means that there would have to be that additional level of, of permission, not just carte blanche, issuing a zoning permit in those particular overlay.
Okay. And a related question to that, if I live in an R1 zone and my house sits on one lot and the lot next to me is vacant, I, I think I heard you say that I could apply for conditional use by putting a solar array in there.
Cool. Yep, you could. Do you own the vacant lot?
Yes. I don't.
No, but I mean, not you, but do the hypothetical you.
Yeah, the, yeah, the individual, yes.
You could, absolutely.
Okay. And the conditional use would be for how long a period of time?
Well, it's once you get a variance, it's a, you know, as long as you, as long as you continue to do it.
Okay. All right, great. Thanks.
Are there other questions or comments from other members of council, members of the audience? Yes, go ahead, please.
Hi, Rob Delak. I live on Morris Avenue here in the city. Serving the Board of Zoning Appeals, and the biggest issue we've encountered in recent years repeatedly is the definition for an eating and drinking establishment. Is this addressing that with the change for the outdoor dining or is it ignoring that issue at this point? So I know Director Riggs, I think, was working on a definition for updating the code for eating and drinking establishments. Is that included here or, or is it not?
To, I don't believe that is included in this.
Okay.
But I have heard that discussion as well.
Did the court define that in that ruling?
That was a drive-through.
That was a drive-through.
But no, 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 they, they defined what was eating and drinking, and eating and drinking was preparation of the food on premises.
I'd have to come back.
And serving on-site.
Yeah, and that's how the guy was able to get around it. They weren't preparing anything. And preparation even included taking a cup and putting it under a Coke fountain and, and that, it being preparation. And I think that was very clearly defined in that, and, yeah, that's law right in that court ruling.
May I say that that doesn't change the fact that the definition we have in our code is vague and the court had to interpret it because it's so vague. It needs to be fixed. But this isn't being addressed here at all.
It, it's not, Mr. Delak. However, you know, I think it makes it somewhat, somewhat moot related to those particular establishments because it basically just says outdoor dining is permitted. I mean, you could have a, you know, an auto repair shop and you could allow outdoor dining at the auto repair shop. It wouldn't matter if it was in eating or drinking establishment. So, but I, I agree with you, but we probably need to clarify that portion as a, as a separate effort, and I'll, I'll take a note.
Please.
Are there other comments or questions from any other members of the audience? Okay. Then moving on to our final item on the agenda is a redway use permit. Okay, then, moving on to our final item on the agenda is a right-of-way use permit for parking on an unnamed alley. And this is a very specific request as, as we see on a regular basis here in planning. When a property owner wishes to utilize the city's right-of-way, they need a Title 49 special right-of-way permit. And this request comes from Michelle Wilson, the owner of Athens Impact. And her business is located right next door to the Village Bakery on East State Street. And she applied for a permit to utilize a portion of an unnamed alley that runs between her business and the Village Bakery, to utilize that for parking for her business. And I have seen this location and I always thought that it was the driveway that belonged to that property. So it does not, it is not an alley that goes through to anything, is it? And so this application and photo and map were provided to council from the Code Office and with no comments from code enforcement. So I, they did, they did not list any concerns and this seems to be a fairly straightforward request.
And I can just make, you know, one comment based upon my discussion with Director Riggs. This is a paper alley. It's unopened, unmaintained, but it is a platted alley and this is a, a business owner wanting to do the right thing and seek a special use of the right-of-way permit because it is indeed public property.
Thank you.
So we recommend approval.
Thank you. Are there other comments or questions? Member Spieldness?
Okay, so you said it's not maintained, but it looks from the picture that something's been maintained because it's still there. In other words, so is it the responsibility of the property owner who wants to use this as a right-of-way to maintain it and keep the, make it into something? I mean, what about any changes or improvements or additions? Can they do that?
So, you know, where we've encountered this before is in situations where there's one property that is accessed via some sort of public property that was platted and never built into a street and then somebody uses it for a driveway. The classic example that I always go back to is Valley View. Valley View is a platted city street off of Fort Street in Athens that, that was never turned into a street, but it does function as the driveway to one property. And the city's position has always been, or at least since I've worked for the city, that if you don't build a structure on it, but you use it as access to just that one property, you can improve it. And if you gain special use of the right-of-way, park on it. In this particular instance, off of East State Street, I, I didn't, I didn't even know it was public, public alley. I think probably, perhaps the property owner just figured it out by reviewing their deed and reviewing the plat, that it is indeed a, a platted public alley that just has never been opened or maintained by the city. So to answer your specific question, I said earlier, unmaintained, it, it's not something that I am aware of cities, city service personnel ever maintaining. I believe the adjacent property owner or the property owner there and the previous property owner probably maintained it.
So could she put asphalt on it? I mean, since it's city property? I mean, I, I'm just curious because I've had alley issues in the West Side, so I want to be able to answer questions appropriately.
I mean, the special use of the right-of-way permit is to park on it. You know, I suppose we could put an extra provision to say if, you know, this body said you're not, you're not to place asphalt on it. And as a condition of the special use permit, that we would prohibit that. You know, certainly a building would be not acceptable, at least from my perspective because, you know, then you're taking, taking something that, that ultimately is public property and placing a, an improvement on that's significant. And it's really an encouragement. But asphalt or pavement, I, I think it'd be a condition of the special use permit if you wanted to.
I guess I'm surprised she doesn't have to buy it.
Well, yeah, I understand what you're saying, but this is just her requesting for that, the right-of-way permit to be able to use it. You know, I, we would also have to make sure that there were no utilities. I don't believe that there are. I was looking at the GIS earlier today and interestingly, this paper alley goes all the way back up to, we own two parcels of land off of Alexander. Not developable lands, but I think that paper alley actually kind of continued north and then headed over to Alexander up in that area. But again, never developed, sat there on paper. It does appear to have gravel that's, that exists on that alley and it does appear to be used. As I'm looking at the GIS right now, you know, someone's been using it as opposed to it being a, a grassy lot and that it's not. It's, it does have gravel, it's a curb cut, clearly.
Yeah, it's clearly been used like a driveway or for parking in the past. And like Director Stone said, I believe the, the current owner just recently discovered that it was not a driveway that went with the property, but is a right, a, a public right-of-way. So just like we've done for other locations where individuals request the right to, to use a portion of the public right-of-way for parking, that, that's what's happening in this case. And, and so if we were to sell it, then we, the city would in, in future not have access to that. Whereas if it is granted as a, a permit to use the public right-of-way, then the city maintains future options. Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, I guess the issue is if it's really not, if there's really nothing back there that we would ever use, it seems like the policy should be that we want to sell it to get the, you know, tax benefits and the money. But if there is really something back there that we could use it for, then I understand the right-of-way. Otherwise, it seems like we should be selling it.
Mayor?
Just to remind council, the, the real challenge behind doing something like you're suggesting is that we would have to put it out, seal bid and sell it to the highest bidder and it could, in that case, the potential is there for it to go to someone other than the individual who's asking for the right-of-way permit. We run that risk. We run that risk with disposal of any property, with the city disposing of city properties.
Yes, Member Swank?
Interestingly enough, I actually parked in that driveway today chasing down that boat. And I am very much, I am very much in favor of this for several reasons, but the primary one is health and safety. Right now, this business has no, no parking, really. So what people do is they either park on WAT or on the south side of East State Street and then basically take their life in their own hands trying to cross there. And that's a, even though with the, you know, with the flashing lights, it's still a dangerous spot to, to cross. So it would give, give these folks, this business, and it's a very reputable business and a very community-friendly business. This is the one that Keith Wild is painting the newest mural in Athens on, which is just absolutely gorgeous. So I'd be very much in favor for a health and safety reason. I understand about selling it, but you know what, if I owned Village Bakery, I'd bid on that thing in a minute because it would give me more things. And now everybody's out. So, what, seven years? Is that the, the standard on this?
Correct.
Yeah, the permit is good for seven years. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Members F.
Thank you, I remember Grace. I was just going to point out, looking at the old, the old Google, like I often do when these sort of discussions come up, there's a lovely feature on Google, which I'm sure everyone's aware of, which is the street view. And you can scroll back through previous years to see photos of it. And if you go back, the farthest I can see is 2009 and you can see cars just parking there. So this seems like just pretty straightforward, just, you know, crossing the I's and dotting the Ts if it were.
Okay. Are there other comments? Yes.
Rob Delak, 124 Morris Avenue here in the city. Just a comment, this property owner is very conscientious, has gone through, she's known this issue. I think there's one parking space behind the building that she uses the driveway to get to, but she does not park in the driveway because it's not her property. And she purchases a permit for three spaces, I think it is, to, to meet the city's parking requirements at the old Larry Conrad Building a couple doors down. So she's doing everything right and I think this is exactly the kind of situation where you want to, you want to help her out. And this is a, a good request. I think it should be, good behavior should be rewarded.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, that concludes planning and development.
Are you going to put conditions on it?
No.
No asphalt and structures? Okay.
That's it.
So I'm getting an indication from the chair that we're finished with planning and development. Thank you, Councilmember Grace. And we'll now move on with finance and personnel. That's chaired by Councilmember Crowell, joined by Councilmembers Reisner, Spiffen, Ziff and Spieldness.
I'm just going to start off by inviting Director Lucas to the podium if you'd like to join us. We're starting off with the document on our drive titled Non-Union Benefits. So this is the, the city ordinance for our non-union personnel salary and fringe benefit package. The changes are nicely highlighted as usual in this document and the first change is on page six, under vacations, indicating that part-time prior, part-time service with the city does not count toward the six-month active work status. Does anybody on the committee have any questions about this? Yes, Member Grace?
I just have a question. Because those, like, permanent part-time employees do accrue vacation time. And so I just wondered if that could create a, if, if someone is a, a permanent part-time employee, would this create a conflict if they then go full-time? Would there then be a gap in time when they're not eligible to use their vacation?
If they would become full-time, it would.
So I, I think that that would be problematic if you have, for instance, a permanent part-time employee who's worked for the city for years and has been accruing vacation time and then their position becomes full-time. It doesn't seem that they should have to wait six months before they could use vacation time.
So permanent part-time aren't under the same probationary period? So when they become full-time, they would be a probationary employee, they go through their six months? And full-time employees are not allowed to use their accrued vacation time until they complete their probation?
Does that answer your question, Member Grace, or satisfy you?
It just, it still seems problematic to me. I, I think that it's probably rare that it would come up, but that if, just if someone's position goes from being a permanent part-time to full-time, that they would lose the option of taking vacation for six months. It, it just stood out to me, having known a couple of people who worked for the city for a long time in a permanent part-time role, it, it struck me as an odd situation that.
It is rare. It is indeed rare. Another thing to keep in mind is as you're accruing, you do, you do accrue sick time and comp time in situations and you are eligible to take those accrued times prior to the probationary period ending.
Follow-up, thank you.
Please, Member Grace.
I, I'm just curious if there, if this is a particular problem that has come up that is, we're needing the clarifying language because it, it's an issue or?
So as, as far as I know, this has come from the auditor's office as a, as a cleanup language. So I don't believe it's come up, but it's not something that's been addressed before.
Yeah, I, I, you know, the other situation isn't the person that's a permanent part-time. The situation is someone who's a casual employee, you know, works maybe seasonal help or, or works for, you know, a few hours a week in an intern capacity and then takes on a full-time job with the city and says, well, wait a minute, I worked for the city for 17 years as a, as an intern. I, I should get whatever the provision of numbers of years of vacation. And, and this basically says, no, that's not the case. It's, you know, when you were in a, in a, in a permanent employment type status.
So I just, I wondered if maybe the language could be clearer so that maybe someone who has worked for the city in that permanent part-time, not as a seasonal or, so that if, if that situation would arise, there would, they would not lose the option of taking their vacation that, that they've been accruing during, just because the accrual, like, permanent part-time employees accrue vacation rate or vacation time, whereas the seasonal and others do not, so.
I can look into that some more.
Thank you.
Member Swank, did you have some, I'm sorry, yes, Member Spieldness?
I was just going to say I, I see your point on that and I think just a couple word tweaks might make that clearer. So I think that's.
Yeah, I'll take a look.
Something to work, to look at.
Member Swank, no? Okay, the next change is on page 15. And, um, do you want to go ahead and just discuss this, Director Lucas?
So can we just start with Section D and then we can come back to the strike through?
Yes, please.
Okay, because the strike through connects to a section later.
Right.
So Section D is a, is a, a, a new policy that was written to address modified work duty. Also, some people know it as light duty. And what we, we didn't have any method of control in the past with modified duty. The whole purpose is trying to get people back to work if they have an illness or an injury, get them back to work quicker so they don't need to burn all their FMLA or their accrued leaves. So coming up with a modified duty policy that would provide equity to the entire staff and that's what this is intended to do. So essentially, let's, let's say if you were injured on the job and you use your injury leave and you would get medical clearance to come back to work on a limited basis, you could use modified duty. And what we are wanting to see is 240 hours of modified duty so a person can do some things at work before they're cleared to come back full-time, no restrictions. So another opportunity in conjunction with injury leave, FMLA, modified duty, opportunities for our staff to get back to work, but also put some elements of control in place so that it doesn't get taken advantage of.
Questions for Director Lucas on the modified duty? Yes, Member Spieldness?
Now, it's hard to see past Jeff.
You can always ask me to move.
Oh, and I, I told Director Lucas this earlier, but I think this is a wonderful addition. I think it's an important addition and I think it's very good to see at the city and is showing this kind of professional HR policies are being put into place. So I fully support this.
Thank you.
Other questions from the committee, other members of council, members of the public? Okay, moving on, on page 17.
How does that relate back to what the strike through?
That's where we're getting there.
Oh, 17, okay.
So on page 17, there is an addition to the end of the Section 13 that refer, that will relate back to the strike through. You want to go talk about that?
So what, what we would like to incorporate into the non-union benefits ordinance is that new hires aren't eligible for FMLA until they've worked for the city for one year. So there are situations that we may hire someone that is pregnant or is going to be a father before that one year is up and we'd like to offer the parental leave to those folks before they get their one year.
Thank you.
And what this is asking is new employees that are not eligible for FMLA may be allowed to use parental leave. New employees are asked to refer to the Human Resources Director for further questions and information. New employees are asked to refer to the Human Resources Director for further questions and information.
Members of the committee, any questions on this change? Yes, Members Spieldes?
Thank you. So this is kind of worded vaguely so that you can do it on a case-by-case basis. Is that essentially what you're looking at here?
Other members of council?
So what is parental leave in terms of how long?
It's 240 hours. You must use 160 consecutive.
How many hours?
240.
That's six weeks.
Yeah.
So if I had been here a year and took FMLA, I always get the letters out of whack, FMLA, how many, how long's that?
FMLA is 480 hours, 12 weeks.
So I'm a young person, and I'm considering a job, and I am a woman of childbearing age. And I find out your policy says, "Well, I've got to wait three months before I can think about conceiving a baby." To me, that's a detriment to working for your organization.
So this change is hoping to assist with bringing people into...
Six weeks.
Bringing people into the organization.
Six weeks doesn't cut it for a woman having a baby. Not when, if I wait a year, I get twice that amount of money, or twice that amount of time. Now, let me qualify this. My daughter-in-law is an OB-GYN doctor and had a child that's lucky to be with us today. Six weeks, for some people, would have driven that person right out of your organization. To me, this is a two-tiered system, and I don't like it.
Well, keep in mind that prior to, just before the pandemic, we didn't have a parental leave policy.
That was then. This is, we're talking now.
I got it. But what we've done is we're offering another opportunity for people to utilize that parental leave before they're eligible for FMLA so that we can have an attractive option for people to want to work for the city.
So if I start working for the city tomorrow and unfortunately get hurt on the job, am I covered by workman's compensation after one day?
Yes.
Then why wouldn't I be for this?
This is a, this is a, this is a policy that's very unique to the city. We put this in. We, if we don't make this change, everybody's going to have to wait for one year before...
Unless we change, unless we change that. We could, as a council, we could change this, that the moment you get hired, you are eligible for FMLA benefits, period.
I don't think that's right. That's federal leave.
That's federal.
Do we know that for a fact?
I can, I can double-check. I'm pretty sure that one year in there.
It may not be required by the federal government, but we could offer it. That's the point I'm making. I'm trying to be employee-friendly here.
Just for a point of clarification, FMLA leave is not paid leave.
Correct.
I understand that.
And so the parental leave is full-pay leave.
It doesn't go against accruals.
Right. So the parental leave, as written in our policy, allows for six weeks, which I, I've had four children. I fully agree, six weeks is not enough time. But it was a good start, and it is available to either parent, and it is fully paid for those six weeks, and it does not all have to be used consecutively so that there can be a 160 hours used consecutively, and then there could be a part-time return, which I think is especially beneficial for fathers or perhaps for adoptive parents. And, but FMLA is not paid, and our, and it requires the use of your vacation time and your sick time. And our parental leave policy does not require that a new parent use their vacation or sick time. So then, and that was something that was very important to me when the city adopted this because once you have a kid, even when you're ready to come back to work, there are going to be doctor's appointments and all sorts of other things. So you need to have that time available after returning to work, whether on a full-time or a part-time basis. So what we as a city have to keep in mind in terms of balancing is the fact that there is a significant cost to paying full salary for an employee who is out of work for six weeks or 12 weeks at a time. And so keeping these, it is our, both our job to be a friendly and supportive employer, but also to balance the city's budget. And so this, the language as it currently stands was a negotiation and a compromise between those two issues that the city auditor and I worked on a few years ago.
Yes, Member Reisner.
Realistically, how many persons would take advantage of this in a year? I want to make sure we're not going to bankrupt the city.
One, we had so far.
One, wow.
And that was 2021.
So we're really not talking about a big outlay, are we? No.
I can't say without looking at the numbers.
I mean, no.
But I don't think so.
Yes, Members Spieldes?
Well, it may not be a big outlay, but on the other hand, if it can attract new employees that could be eligible for this, I think that's, I think that's important. And I think that's where Director Lucas is coming from with this, and I think he said that, and I think that's valid.
Yeah, we don't want to, the hiring is tough right now, and losing a potential new hire because of a pregnancy is... I'd like to think that we can get those folks into the city.
Yes, Member Grace?
I absolutely love that. And my only concern is the, like, the challenge of the gray areas, sort of like, it's a... And I think that could create difficulties for the person in your position having to make these decisions in terms of each time, if it does come up that someone is asking for it. Are there circumstances when that would not be approved, and circumstances where it would be? And I think that could create some questions, or like, if it was not approved, and on what basis? And then why, why not approve for one if approved for another, those sorts of issues?
I think the main takeaway I have in that part with the HR director is that we have a communication channel so that folks know what to do, so they can reach out to the Human Resources Director to get guidance. Because there might be, there could be situations where someone doesn't know, and they might not make an attempt to reach out, especially maybe in a father situation.
Other questions about this change to parental leave? Members of the audience, administration?
Just again, a question or clarification from you, Ron, and that is, let's say that the city hired on a married couple, you know? We struggle hiring individuals that aren't married. But if we were to hire on a married couple, and let's say the family was expecting, could both the, both of those couple kind of stagger when they would use a benefit like this? To where one would take it for, and run out that shot clock, and then the other would take it and extend on? So it basically doubles, as Councilmember Swank, you were referring to with FMLA, but paid?
Right.
Yep.
It's a very employee-friendly policy and progressive and well thought out. Thank you. Other questions? Okay, moving on to the last change in this document, page 22. Director Lucas, you want to talk about the standard work schedule?
So when we have part-time employees, particularly permanent part-time employees, those are people that work 29 hours or fewer a week. They should be put to a set schedule, and that schedule should not be modified without some type of effort from the supervisor to notify and get the Human Resources and Auditor's Office on the same page. Because what we end up doing is we sometimes will put a employee into a 40-hour-a-week situation in lieu of utilizing accrued times, and we shouldn't do that. So this is basically saying that part-time employees are not to exceed 1,508 hours in a calendar year, and by keeping those people on a standard schedule, that won't, that won't get, accumulate over that amount. We've had situations in the past where in December, we're telling department heads that their part-time people can't work anymore. So we don't want to do that.
So just noted, Director Lucas, there's something about the lettering here at this section. B, C, D, and then A is struck out and then goes back to B, C, so I'm sure that's just some sort of...
A is above it, but then also below D. It's stuck over after the new be inserted.
If I may.
This is different.
Mine's correct.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Excellent.
All right. Previous version.
Yeah.
That's a conversion problem.
Yeah. I think when we reviewed this previously, it was correct, so we'll figure that out. Okay, yes, Members Spieldes?
Okay, this sounds great, but I'm just curious, what does that do to firefighters and police officers? Their schedules are quite different than office workers.
This is only for...
Non-union? So it doesn't...
Part-time and seasonal.
Yeah, and this is part-time. This is under, this is under "Part-Time and Seasonal Personnel," Article 20.
Oh, okay, that's a little...
So it's specific for... Now, seasonal help is a little bit different, such as pool employees or seasonal maintenance. They can work a 40-hour schedule, but they're, and even more in some situations, but they are to exceed 1,040 hours in a year.
Okay. Thank you for that context.
Other members of the committee, questions? Other members of council? Member Grace?
Just, I don't know a better wording, but I've been working, looking at people's work schedules from the perspective of burnout and employee fatigue, and one of the recommendations from the perspective of a behavioral health expert and an evidence-based approach to reducing employee burnout is to offer flexible schedules. So when I initially read this, my first thought was, if a supervisor is able to accommodate flexible schedules, they should do that. If an employee can accomplish their work on a flexible schedule, it doesn't impact others. And so to me, it wasn't clear that this is to stay within allotted hours per year or things like that. So I just, my, I had initial negative reaction to it because, to me, it seems less supportive and of employees. It seems like we're, we're not going to let you flex your schedule at all. You've got to work set hours. And so I know that one thing that can help with recruitment and retention is for people to know that there is some flexibility, like, maybe they can work a nine to six, or... So I don't, but knowing that this is for part-time and that it is to keep them so that they can work a sort of consistent schedule throughout the year and not run out of hours before the end of the year, that it makes sense. But anyway, just wanted to put that out there, that read separately, it sounds restrictive rather than supportive of employees, if that makes sense. So again, maybe a wording.
Yeah, I can look into that wording a little bit and see if there's some other way to communicate, communicate that.
But once you explained it, I thought, "Oh, yeah, that makes sense."
And I think understanding that it's under the context of part-time and seasonal, too, you know? There's some scheduling things that you do with full-time, and it's different.
Any other comments or questions?
On this topic or the whole document?
The whole document, please, yes.
Mr. Lucas, under 21 Paid Holidays, number eight, is there any desire to change the name of that holiday?
Columbus Day.
Oh, absolutely.
So we can make that change.
I refer to it as Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Yeah, it's just in print here, and since we're already doing this document, it seemed like a logical time to address it.
Make a big one.
Yeah, I think that that should be a conversation unto itself in looking at that holiday because I have some other ideas for other things that I believe that the city should be doing. But that's, again, in particular, general election days. So I think maybe we should have a holiday naming slash holiday creation, maybe, conversation.
Calendar conversation, yeah.
In the near future, but for the sake of this conversation.
Maybe we need an ad hoc committee.
Director Lucas, just FYI, that holiday does appear not only on the list, but in B, too, for one of the mayor's floating mayor holidays.
Yeah.
So just if it's going to be changed, it'll be more than one location. Anything else, Members Swank?
No, that was it. Thank you.
Okay, members of the public, any comments on this document? City administration? Okay, the next item, and we'll leave Director Lucas right where he is, is the actual staffing ordinance.
Do you have the staffing ordinance available to you? If you do not, I have printed...
We have it on our drive. And there are a few... Before we get to the percentages here, I'd like to discuss Section 4.
Excuse me, Members Swank?
Yes, please.
Are we looking at the staffing ordinance?
We're looking at the actual language of the ordinance that authorizes the staffing levels.
Okay, understood.
And that is, that has, that has the actual positions at the end of it.
Gotcha.
But first, we're looking at the actual language. And I want to talk about Section 4, which reads, "Upon receiving written notification from an employee of impending departure, city council does hereby authorize the president of council, mayor, law director, and auditor to hire replacements for currently staffed positions so long as adequate funds are available within the elected official's budget. There will be a temporary increase in the staffing numbers during the overlap of employees within these positions that will subsequently sunset to the official staffing levels." And I don't know if Director Stone wants to speak to this. Why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, if I could go ahead and speak to this particular one. This is a request that I made. In the past, we have done this on a case-by-case basis where we know that there's an employee retiring. They've given us notice of their retirement, and we've asked to have the staffing level increased in order to have overlap for those employees. In a lot of cases, that allows for, you know, one to do some continuity with the other one if it's a one-off position. But in situations, particularly in the Police and Fire Department where there's a significant lead time on training of new individuals coming in the door, that allows us to kind of hire and then get a jumpstart on that training so that they can, they can function as a, you know, fully capable part of the department sooner, as opposed to waiting until... know, fully capable part of the department sooner, as opposed to waiting until that retirement or that resignation date actually comes in effect. You know, oftentimes, I ask people to give me as much notice as possible if they're going to retire, and sometimes they do. Sometimes I get two weeks. But the bottom line is, this would allow us to go ahead and proceed and pull the trigger on hiring without every time having to come back to council and ask for a special one-off case to do that. And I think in today's hiring environment, this would be something very helpful with us. I think we would use it mostly in the Police and Fire Departments. We probably would also consider it with plant operators because they have a longer lead time with training as well before they can function on their own in there. But by and large, this is just some flexibility I think that would help the city.
Thank you. Do you want to speak to that at all? Okay, Committee on this specific item of this overlap, any Members Spianas?
Yeah, I just have talked with Chief Powell when we did our little orientation about this very issue, so this makes a lot of sense. And I'm really glad that you've brought this up and I totally support it. Thank you.
Other Members of council, questions on this issue? Members of the public? Okay, now let's just go a little bit further up in this document and talk about the highlighted sections for percentages. You know, obviously, we are talking about our authority to authorize a generally hourly pay raise for non-union compensation. And I'll let Director Stone talk about his extensive work on this. Yeah, yep.
I love charts.
Please, Mayor.
Just to kind of kick this off, I want to start by applauding Director Lucas for going to great pains to come up with some, what I believe to be very creative, solutions to increases. And it also, it really lends itself, and you'll hear more about this from Ron himself, is it will help us to where we're so often seeing some, certainly some inequity when it comes to those who are in the higher pay bands with increases versus those who are in the lower pay bands. Rather than what I've always experienced when I was at Ohio University is compression, this is the opposite. This is creating more disparity between the top pay bands, as I just indicated, versus those, as we are trying to attract new employees here to the city bathroom. So Ron, I'm going to kick it to you.
Thanks, Mayor. So left to right with this document, you'll see the position, these are all just the non-union positions. The little asterisk by a position means that it is FLSA exempt, so a position is not eligible for overtime or comp time and also not bound by schedule. Pay band, which is our 1 to 12 category that we developed in the pay study last year, and then the pay range for each band is the mid, minimum of the band, the midpoint, and the maximum of the band. And then the 2,022 hourly rate. So the percentages are based off of that number. So when you see in the next couple of columns, there's two options that I prepared. One is a progressive percentage increase for the pay bands, and they're divided into three groups. 1 to 4 is a group, 5 to 8 is a group, and 9 to 12 is a group. And working from 12 down, 12 to 9 would be a 2% increase, 8 to 5 is a 4% increase, and 4 to 1 would be a 6% increase. So, and then that number that you see there is the actual hourly rate change.
Could you say those again, please?
So the 2% is shown here for pay bands 12 to 9, so 12, 11, 10, 9. 4% would be pay bands 8 to 5, so 8, 7, 6, and 5. And a 6% would be 4 to 1, so 4, 3, 2, and 1.
If you look at your chart that Ron has created, you'll see that darkened line between those three groupings, which helps in terms of identifying the four, two fourths.
Yeah, it's just a little thicker font on the line. And then at the bottom is the hourly cost for the entire non-union employee category, and then what that total annual cost would equal. So it's based on 2,080 hours, so that's how you read it. And then the three red marks on the far right-hand side are positions that are not currently filled, so. The second category is a little bit different. It's a progressive, almost like a graduated scale, where I took the highest pay band, which is 12, and worked down to the lowest, which is 1, and did a half percentage increase every time we changed a pay band. And I started at 1%. So pay grade 1, or I'm sorry, pay grade 12 is a 1% increase, pay grade 11, 1 and 1/2%, and working all the way down to pay grade 1, which would be a 6 and 1/2% increase. The reason I created this is looking at how we've been working through inflation this year and seeing where those numbers are and trying to understand how we could create a model where people that aren't making as much are able to absorb that hit a little bit, a little bit more. So with that said, when you do a 2% across-the-board type of raise, it benefits pay grades 12, 11, 10 more than it would benefit pay grades 3, 2, and 1. It's just the way the percentage would work. So you get a bigger disparity. So the rich get more and the low get less, overtime especially. So trying to be creative in terms of how we were going to manage some of the consumer index challenges we've seen this year.
I agree with the mayor that I was very impressed when Director Lucas presented this originally, and I really appreciate the work he's done on this. Are there questions from the committee on the two scenarios that we are looking at or anything else on these charts? I know it's a lot of information, and, yes, Member Eisner?
Is there any, of the two scenarios, is there one that you favor more than the other?
I would defer to the mayor, Director Stone, on that.
I think what it boils down to is you look down at the bottom at the total cost. And again, when you're looking at those total costs, they're off by, you know, $4,000, about $5,000, give or take, between those two models. I think they're both good models, and I would certainly enjoy hearing City Council's thoughts on the two models.
Members Spianas?
Well, according to the Ohio Constitution Amendment 2, passed in 2006, Article 2, Section 34A, wages, minimum wage is tied to present increases. So minimum wage is now, is going up to $10.10, which is an 80 cent increase or 8.6%. So my understanding is that the Constitution ties it to cost of living, if I understand that correctly. And so I'm wondering why we don't do that. I mean, it could go, I mean, if, you know, if there's no inflation, there would be no increase, but if there is more extreme, I understand this is not exactly what you want to hear perhaps, but I think it's worth having that conversation considering, as has been brought up several times today, how hard it is to hire people. And the other question, and perhaps I should separate this too, I understand we have no such thing as merit pay, and I'm wondering if that can also boost the inspiration of people to want to work for Athens over other communities and employers.
I would, I mean, the administration can respond to this. Merit pay is something that we have considered in the past few years. It was tabled and not enacted. I think it's maybe a separate conversation from what we're looking at today. Help me understand a little bit by what you're recommending in terms of the actual percentage increase.
Well, like I said, I know my social security is going up 8.6%. I know minimum wage is going up 8.6% per how this is going in Ohio. I realize we can't do that for everybody, but we're talking about 6.5 for the lowest level. Perhaps bumping that up just a little bit to, for that reason, might be helpful, is my opinion on it. I don't want to be a budget buster, but on the other hand, I think it needs to be at least on the tape.
Thank you, Members Spianas. Member Eisner?
Okay, what is the minimum wage right now?
I just said...
I forgot. Help me, I'm old.
Okay, it's going up to $10.10.
Okay, so that's a $10 base. Our base minimum wage here is $15.37. So if your base is larger, even though the percentage is a little less, you're going to get more. So I don't really see an issue here. I mean, isn't 6% of $15 more than 8% of $10?
Yes, but it's not 8.6%.
Well...
Just saying.
But that's kind of irrelevant when it's the amount of money that you're putting in your pocket.
Well, if you had...
Okay, are we talking about the city having a minimum wage standard? Well, we do, right? So, and we're paying $5 more than that at the very minimum, so I really don't, I'm afraid I just don't see it coming.
I think that 8.6% is higher than 6.5 regardless.
Well...
So I...
I think I understand the points on this end of the table. Members Ziff, do you want to chime in here?
Yeah, sort of, can I start with that and then transition to something else?
Sure.
Oh, thank you, sir. So I tend to also sort of swing in the direction that Members Spianas is going. I think, don't quote me on it, but I believe it's called the Parkinson's Effect, and it's referring to the amount of money that you make and how your general living expenses generally increase with what you're making. So I understand the 8.6%, while, yes, our minimum wage of 1,537 is higher than the minimum wage required by the state of Ohio, it was soon to be $10.10. That appropriate raise being commensurate with inflation does make sense to me. So I do understand where you're coming from with that, and I appreciate your points on it. And then my second thing here is, just so I'm clear, Director Lucas, the two different plans we're looking at are on the far right, the second from the far right, and the third from the far right, the progressive 2, 4, 6% and the progressive 0.5% increments, those two columns are the several ones.
Correct. Yeah, so the progressive 2, 4, 6 is the third column from the left, and the progressive 0.5% are the two rightmost columns, and the percent amount is just the percentage increase per band.
Gotcha. Well, I do, again, I hate to just sit here and echo what people are saying, but I do really appreciate the amount of work that you've put into this. I like the idea of giving a higher percentage to the lower pay bands. I think it does make sense. So I appreciate you and the administration for working on that. Yeah, I don't need to keep rambling forever, but good job.
Thank you.
Members Spianas?
Yeah, I think that, again, I've said this before, but we have to think about how we fit into the marketplace and if we are competitive with other employers and other comparable positions around the region, that that's really what matters here, and I don't know what those are, so I'm hoping, and from our conversation this morning, I think you probably do, Director Lucas, so if you could comment on that, I would appreciate it.
You know, so by ordinance, we're required to look at our pay bands at the halfway point of our pay study, and then at the five-year mark, we're, by legislation, we are to do a new study. So with that said, at some point, that pay band will be adjusted for certain expenses, whether it be cost of living or whether it be market values of comparable positions, we'll look at that and move the band, so to speak, so that we have a situation where people are starting at a little bit higher rate, but also people aren't getting topped out as they get into that 25, 30-year mark of their career. They don't run into a wall where they're topped out. Want to keep moving that band a little bit.
Mayor? I just want to throw this out there for council. Again, I know that I'm hearing a lot of zeroing in on the minimum of the pay range for the bands, and in particular, I mean, I've heard a lot of conversation about pay band 1 being But, you know, I also encourage council to look at the midpoint and the maximum for that same pay band because we're talking about a range of $34,216 a year up to $45,260 a year for these particular positions that are within that pay band. So again, I don't want council to not at least attend to the fact that we're talking about individuals who can, will be at various levels into that pay band as well with this particular progressive increase, so again, just want you to not just focus on that minimum.
Thank you, Mayor. Good point. Other committee, anything else right now? Other Members of council, Members Spianas?
Yeah, Mr. Lucas, I'd like to move from the abstract to the concrete, just to make sure I understand this. And I want to focus on two positions for the sake of the example and to better understand this. The service safety director position, which is the only one on here that's a 12, and the city planner, which is the, I guess, is the bottom one on number nine, not the least amount of money, but the bottom one. If I calculate this correctly, based on a 52-week year, 40 hours a week, the safety service director, $105,851, the city planner, $72,509. What I want to focus on is not how much money they make, but the difference between the two. And if my calculations are correct, it's $33,342. If we go to that far column and the increase that the service safety director gets is 1%, the salary would go to 106, 609. And if we go to the city planner, and the city planner gets 2.5%, salary goes to 74, 321. The difference is $32,288. So it's about $1,100 difference. What somebody makes is what society values that person at that place and time, and there are all kinds of formulas that go into that and so on and so forth. I was not aware of this, this whole concept until last Wednesday when I was a part of a town hall meeting. a part of a, a, a town hall meeting at a university here in Ohio, and the president flat out said, "We are done with percentage increases." And the reason we're done with percentage increases are twofold. Number one, they exacerbate the gap between high and low paid earners. You know, if we give an example, if you had someone making forty dollars, or forty thousand dollars a year, and somebody making sixty thousand dollars a year, that's a twenty thousand dollar gap. If the increase across the board was two percent for ten years, at the end of ten years, that gap went from twenty thousand to twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty. Now, did that high earner suddenly have more value on his job? I doubt it, but the gap gets big. So I'm, I'm really glad that this aligns with what was shared with us by a president of a university here in Ohio. So what I need to understand is, one of the things that we're considering, is it the far right column that those percentages as listed in that column would be the percentage increase that each of those individuals would receive?
Yes.
And that would be for one year?
Correct. This is, we, we do the, these, these scenarios annually.
Okay, good. Because hopefully, times change in the next twelve months.
Well, historically, we've done a percentage, a certain percentage across the board, and this, I, I believe we may have tried some progressive models in the past, but they didn't, they didn't go all the way through, but we've always been able to do like the two percent across the board, two percent.
Yeah.
So this is, this is something, and, and, and to your point, Members Swank, it's exactly, it's exactly correct, you know, the, 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 the highest earners, if you do a percentage across the board, are going to continue to gap away from the lower earners.
Exactly. And, and for that reason, I would be very much in favor of this right-hand column. Not that we're going to do it now, but I think in the coming year, two thousand twenty-three, early in the year, much like we did with the trash contract this year, early in the year, we broached the subject of merit pay. Ohio University has done this for years, at least the department my wife was in, because I came across a, a statement in an article that, that really rung true with me, it's simply this, "The recognition that high performance yields no more financial reward than those performing poorly provides no financial incentive for them to aspire to a higher level." By no means am I criticizing any worker here. The last four experiences I've had with the folks come out of Mr. Stone's office, if you can give him a hundred, I'd give him a hundred and ten, it's been so good. But there is something to be said about aspiring to something a little better we all can do, and that's why I like to examine the merit pay possibilities in the coming calendar year.
Other members of council, Member Grace?
Thank you, Member Crowe. I just want to pile on my appreciation for the work that you've done on this, because I think that the progressive increase is, is definitely a fair, it's, it's a right, the right direction to go. I'm wondering if there could possibly be a compromise, so that since the one that's a two, four, six is just a, a bit more total than the, the half percent increment, perhaps more of the lower categories could be a bit higher, instead of it being a half percent up all the way. So maybe we go to seven for one, six and a half for two, increase those a bit, so then we've got equivalent costs to the two as, as a possibility. That might, maybe that would address some of Members Spelmas's concerns, just using that slight difference in, in cost of the two plans to increase some of the lower bands a bit more. Might, might be an option, but I, I really appreciate the, the consideration and, and the thought put into looking at progressive band increases. So thank you.
Other comments from council members? Mayor?
I certainly appreciate the dialogue that's going on with this. I said on the front end that I was going to turn it to you and see what your opinions were, and will tell, share with you. Mine is the thing that I think is the more, most for this coming year, the most equitable is the progressive point five percent increment moving forward. There you have it.
Members of the public, any comments on this item? Okay, thank you for your work on this, Directors Lucas.
My pleasure.
Okay, you can still stay there. On the, at the bottom of this are the changes to the actual FTEs, and I'll just remind everyone that we have a diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility training coordinator, that full FTE added to the, to the ordinance. We have two positions in the auditor's office that are, that are being split. They, they were two FTEs, and now they're two separate positions, one FTE each, so no overall change in FTEs there. And then a, a request, a recommendation from the Chief Reimer, that the position of General Secretary within the Athens Fire Department be increased from one F, from point seven three FTE to one FTE. I don't know if, if Director Lucas or Director Stone wants to speak to that?
I, I could speak to it. This is a request that the chief has had for a long time. You know, we've turned over three general secretaries, or part-time secretaries in that position, and I think since he's been chief, and there's a, there's a, you know, a case to be made for continuity in that role. You know, so you're not training a new person the whole time that come in, the, the one we, we currently have is leaving. And he thinks that if it's a full-time position, that it's more likely that we would keep somebody for a longer period of time. I do believe the works there, you know, ultimately, you know, you can always do more in, in the fire department, and so in instances where the, the general secretary is not available because of the number of hours, you know, either the administrative captain or the chief ends up doing those duties, and so this would be a, just a situation to help his, his operation. I'm supportive of his request. I think really the cost is in, not so much in the hourly rate, the cost is in that's one more person or one more family potentially in our insurance pool. So, you know, I mean, there's a liability there since we're self-insured. Some cases, it doesn't cost anything, in some cases, it costs a whole lot if you're insuring one more person there, but I think it's, you know, I think it's worth, I think it's worth doing ultimately to support his operation.
Thank you, Director Stone. Questions from the committee on the specific FTEs? Other members of council, specific questions to this? Okay, thank you for that. Yes, sorry, Director Lucas.
Sorry. I, I just wanted to clarify that the DEIA training coordinator is already in the ordinance, we're just adding the A to the title.
Oh, thank you.
So DEIA slash training coordinator.
Okay, accessibility.
It's just, it's just a title change.
Thank you. Okay, and another item here, where we have Director Lucas, are elected officials' salaries. And this is. Yes?
I, sorry, the, the ordinance that deals with the, all the pay increases also has a, a section of one-time lump sum.
Oh, very good. Thank you, Councilmember Grace. So, section three of this does indicate that city council does hereby authorize a one-time lump sum payment of blank percentage to those employees whose general hourly pay rate exceeds or will exceed the maximum pay rate in his or her pay grade. Do you want to speak to this, Director Lucas?
So that's something that we are attempting to get out of by doing the pay study last year to increase those bands. I don't know if it will be a, I don't know if it will fit any situation here. I, I'll have to do some math on a couple of the, uh, long, longtime employees that might be at, at the top, but I don't, I don't expect that to happen.
I mean, looking at the, looking at it right now.
I don't think it will.
Yeah, I mean, this is something that's in the ordinance every year, for people who are topped out.
Right.
And so if, if the percentage raise increase that you approve takes that person beyond the range, then, you know, there's not a mechanism to, you know, basically that's the mechanism to pay them the extra, and so it doesn't go into their base salary, it's basically a one-time, that's why it's a blank percentage there, because it could be a, a point zero three percent, or it could be a point one percent, or what have you, based on how far the percentage range you give to everybody else takes them above the max. But as I do a quick check on this table, nobody's in that category.
It doesn't look like it's going to affect them.
Based upon, you know, what you've discussed.
Okay, so if you all can confirm that, then when this comes forward, that section would be removed?
I, I mean, you know, I would just ask that, that we remember it in future years, then. You know, I, I would ask that you don't remove it, because if it's not applicable, we won't use it, but my fear would be.
What percent would we put in there, then?
Well, I mean, it's, it's, it's specific to the employee, right? It could be a, it could be a, a person that is, you know, that two percent would take them to one point seven percent above the max, and so that one point seven percent comes as a, as a lump sum and doesn't go into their base rate.
Okay, I understand that, but the way this reads is that we put a specific percentage in this document?
That's not certainly the intent that, that we gave, and we were, we're hopeful that that can sit. So in future years, if we don't have a pay study and somebody does bump, or gets that max band, and it's in there, and then, you know, a future council would, would go, "Wait a minute, where's this section come from?" We just wouldn't exercise it if it wasn't used. Is that correct, Ron?
Correct, but it, it, looking at this, Andy, it looks like it will be used, so we'll have to do some, we'll have to do, we'll have to figure that. It looks like the police captain is going to be.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So we'll wait, the language proposed to that.
I'll have to figure out the difference.
Right. Okay, thank you, Members. Yes, Members Spelmas?
Well, to make it adaptable year after year, couldn't we change the wording a little bit to make it a percentage of, as appropriate for the individual employee or something like that, rather than having a specific percentage that we would have to change every year?
Right, or more, that's more for employees, then you need multiple.
Right, exactly.
So the language as right now doesn't work.
Yeah.
It needs to be adjusted.
Okay. Yeah.
Yes, Members Jeff?
Thank you, Member Crowe. Just as we, as we, we've put in so much work, well, in particular, Member McCary and his OU student folk have put in so much work, just under section two, maybe if we could strike out the his/her gendered language, just go with a non-gendered term, like day or something. Section two there, it says city council here authorized one-time lump sum percentage, blah, blah, pay rate, and his slash her pay grade.
Gotcha, section three.
Oh, section three, I'm sorry. I know how to read, sometimes.
See that, Director Stone, Director Lucas?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you, Member Grace. Okay, back to elected officials. This is, this is mayor, auditor, law director, treasurer, and, and council president, and members of council, and, um, proposal here is a two percent annual increase beginning in two thousand twenty-four. So we, we will have to win our positions in order to have this apply to us. Are there any questions about a two percent increase for elected officials from the committee? Please, Members Spelmas, tell us. No, I, I appreciate your.
Well, you know, I mean, I think one of my concerns about the, the pay rate for us and for other elected officials is that particularly for council and council president, it's, it's not really, it's at a, it's at a rate that for people that are retired, fine, you know, we don't need the money, so it's okay. For people who are working, I think there's a more disincentive, because the amount of hours that it takes to really do this is, is more than your regular person who's working full-time, and I'm, I'm a little worried about that as we, you know, head down the road. I don't know what other council members are, you know, in other communities are making, whatever, but that's just my sort of initial feeling about it, and if we get a two percent raise, that means we're losing money, so it seems almost kind of pointless.
Thank you. Other members of the committee? Other members of council? Members Swank?
I, I agree wholeheartedly, but there's some other things that I'd like to address here. We have two people in critical positions who have been in their positions for quite some time, and I, I hope both of them are with us for many, many years, and when they decide to retire or not run again for office, it's because they don't want to do it anymore. But I'm speaking specifically of the law director and the auditor, and, and, and I'm wondering down the road, how those salaries compare to salaries of people in similar positions in similar cities as ours? And, and I don't know the answer, I have not had time to look into that, but I think it's worth something looking at. Secondly, I know she's going to shoot me the evil eye on this and, and, and all of that, but I, I think our council president is grossly underpaid for the amount of work he or she is required to do. We come here on Monday nights and have meetings, we spend X number of hours during the week doing research, but we also do constituent services, and, and that's what's exciting to me, solving people's problems. But the, the, the office of, of council president not only runs this body efficiently, attends numerous meetings, but is also called upon to be the acting mayor, and I think we should take a very, very serious look at, at that, at, at that, that position and the salary associated with it. I don't think it's enough. I don't even think it's close.
Remember, Terry?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask if anyone has any historical recall on when the last time council's pay rate increased?
Not six years ago?
We have been getting the pay increases, to answer your question, each year.
I think your question was, when did we vote on it?
When did we last experience a pay increase? So would that, is it something that has happened annually?
It, it happens on a periodic basis, and what has to happen is, is that this council needs to review the salaries now for elected officials before those elected officials could potentially be on the ballot. So in other words, if you're, if you're on the ballot, and we're looking at this next February, and you're already on the ballot, well, there you are, you're, you're, you're putting through your own pay increases. We have in the past done salary comparable rates for other cities within the Ohio Municipal League for the same-sized population, and I know that we have done those for council members, I'm not as sure as if we have done that for auditor and law director, Council member Swank, as you raised the issue. So there's potentially time to, to, to look at municipal league figures, to see if we are comparable.
And to sort of answer your question, Member McCary, if you look at this document, you can see the differences in the pay for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four for council members, basically, so it's, small increases have been built into the schedule, and that's what this would do for twenty-four through two thousand twenty-eight. Mayor?
Yeah, I mean, I think the question came up as to when did we do this last, and if I recall, it was four years ago, and before that was four years before that, to where we're setting these things because of the fact that council year, two years, but the law director, the auditor, and myself are four-year elected, so it was under that four-year cycle, and as you can see, I, I, I could be wrong on this, but I believe in two thousand eighteen, it was two percent for, for all the elected officials. I don't recall, so don't ask me what it was in two thousand fourteen, I don't, I'm surprised I can remember yesterday sometimes. But again, it was, there was a percentage increase each year back in two thousand fourteen when we passed it as well.
Thank you. Members Swank?
So, just a quick thing, back in two thousand nineteen, Zanesville City Council members and mayor and law director and auditor and treasurer got a ten percent raise. Now, I'm not advocating that, but to your point, two percent in these economic times, and, and you're absolutely right, you pretty much have to be. You pretty much have to be retired or have a job that gives you tremendous flexibility, like a Monday to Friday schedule, to serve in this position. And when I worked for the university, I had that Monday to Friday schedule. You had that Monday, anybody working at the university, basically have that. You have a few things on the weekend, but essentially you're required to be there Monday to Friday. I know you put in more time than that, but you understand what I'm saying. It's not a shift work where the week before you go into Kroger's and you see on the wall, these are the days you're working next week. So yeah, it's, it, 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 that and 44 meetings a year, I think discourages some people from serving on this body. And, uh, when we talk about wards here in a little bit, if we talk about expansion, I think we need to attract as wide a variety of candidates as possible. But would it be appropriate to very quickly look at some comparable cities to see, uh, what they're doing? And enter that into the conversation? President Nigel, does this have to be voted on by December 31st in this calendar year? Or does it have to be voted on prior to the date that petitions are due for the 2023 elections?
It has to be before the filing, and I believe it's February 6th. And that means it has to take effect by January 6th.
Might as well, yeah.
So you might as well get it done this year.
Yeah, exactly.
Because you need the 30 days for it to take effect, so.
Plus, we're working on our budget and we would know these things now. Member Reisner?
I just want to comment. I've, uh, I've been on council almost 12 years. I've talked to many people, my ward and other places. And, uh, I was surprised how many people real, did not know that council was even paid. They thought it was basically an all-volunteer thing. And they frankly couldn't see any reason why we should be paid at all. We should be such great public servants that we would simply just say, well, I like it so much, I'd pay the city to do it. So that's the problem you get to when you're going to say, well, I want to raise our salary. You're going to have people, voters, who are going to say, I don't like that idea. And I think that is one reason why we have never really done anything about raising the salaries for council. It's politically, it's, it's dangerous, you know? And it's, it's something you've got to face. And, you know, there's going to be blowback if you said, well, let's, let's, let's kick it up to 10%. Or better yet, let's just come up with an entirely different pay structure and say, instead of $8,743.80, we make it $40,000 a year. That would really upset a lot of people, not, not to mention the auditor. Because we've had these discussions with the auditor many times, and it always comes down to, we, Jeff, we, we just can't afford it. You're, you're gonna break the city budget. You just, we just can't do it. Now, there's money for other things, but not to pay you. So I'm just putting that out there. This is just an, an opinion of mine. Has, has nothing to do with policy, but.
Thanks, Member Reisner. Member Grace?
Just to follow up on Member Reisner's comments, I've also had people tell me, there's no way I would run for that. That's too much work, too much grief, too much, um, being in the, the public eye. There's no way I would do that for that amount of money. It's not worth it. So there, there are people who, who avoid public office because they just, they see it as, too much work for the compensation.
So.
So it, it does go both ways.
Mayor?
We will certainly look into, I'll, I'll reach out to OML, uh, reach out to Kent Skerritt and see what pay studies have been done, out there when it comes to comparable and, and non-comparable. It's, it's real tricky though, to be honest with you. There are city councils out there that don't get paid anything. You know, again, it is exactly like Jeff Reisner was saying. It's like you are just, uh, acting on behalf of the legislative body with no compensation for doing so. Um, you also have physicians out there, um, you know, law directors, auditors, where they are only required by their statute to work, um, certain, you know, only so many hours of the week. You know, I, I know that my counterpart down in Chillicothe, uh, by law, another charter city, but they're, they are, uh, he is only responsible for working four days a week. Um, and therefore can practice his other profession a day of the week, uh, if he so chose to do something like that. So I'll look for good comparables, um, and make sure that it fits with what the city's structure is at this point in time. But again, I will share with you, um, to, to the point of Lancaster, you know, I, uh, will reach out to David Scheffler, Mayor Scheffler, because it's, it's not inconceivable that they may have not had an increase in a long time. Um, we had a period like that here in the City of Athens where mayor and city council had 0% increase, um, for, uh, several periods. And, and in my opinion, that was really doing a disservice to the position itself for the people who are serving that capacity, whether you're the legislative branch, the judicial branch, or the executive branch. You know, I, I think that, uh, I think differently about the approach that was taken when that happened way back when. I'll certainly look at what OML has, what, what comparables are out there.
All right, certainly any further information will be very, uh, helpful to this. I would say that if you have different ideas about either the elected officials or the, um, progressive, uh, non-union, uh, increases to communicate with Director Lucas. And, uh, we will see what comes up in the future.
Very near future.
Okay, um, uh, and Mr. Lucas can stay right there. The next item here is, um, the, the DEIA Training Coordinator. The city administration, we, we negotiated a, a starting rate with the, the incumbent, um, uh, at, at 16% through pay grade four. She was hired in though at 10% through that pay grade. And, uh, the city administration would like to increase her an additional 6% and have this be retroactive to her start date of September 13th. Did I get that correct, Director Lucas?
Yes, sir.
Are there any, do you understand? She was hired at 10% through her pay grade. And the, the negotiation was 16% through her pay, through her pay grade. And so, uh, the city administration would like to, um, get her her 16% and have that be retroactive to her start date.
Thank you for that repetition. It's getting late.
No problem. Any questions from the committee, other members of council?
So the, so they, we as a city agreed to pay it 16% through. She agreed to accept 16% through.
I believe so. I believe that's correct so far.
Yeah, that's correct so far.
Keep going.
Why are we only paying 10?
Because that's what we're limited to without council approval.
Over 10% through a pay grade has to have council approval.
Over 10% through a, okay.
Up to 10%.
Up to 10%.
I have the authority to hire someone up to 10%, but it requires council action to go above that, up to 25% into the pay grade.
So, so for a new, I, I'm sorry, I was just to, to expand on that. So if you're hiring from the outside, the administration has authority to hire in at 25%, up to 25% through. If you're promoting somebody, uh, who's already a city employee, the non-union pay and benefits ordinance only allows, uh, basically a 10% increase for their, because they're, it's a promotion, basically.
So this individual is already an employee?
He's a city employee, right.
Oh, did I know that, okay.
So, I mean, that's the situation, right?
For the DEI coordinator?
That's why it was 10? That's why we, we were capped at that?
I, I, I'm, I'm getting, I'm getting confused. We, we hired the DEI coordinator and we brought, we brought them in at 10%.
Okay, I'm sorry. Maybe I messed that one up.
Yeah, and, and so, so my understanding was is that we needed to get council approval for the other 6% uh, through the pay. So that's, that's why we're having, that's why.
You do need council approval for retroactive.
So where's this 25%? Do we hire them from the outside?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we could go to 25%? Without council approval?
Apparently.
Yeah, we can't. That's what they, that's what they were.
So what you're really asking for is, so basically we had an administrative snap through here and we're asking for retroactive pay?
Yep.
Okay.
Getting, getting, getting the position up to 16% through the pay grade.
Yeah, no, that, that, okay.
Other questions on the DEIA Training Coordinator? I know it's getting late. They were going, President Nigel. Okay, we may be finished with Director Lucas.
He's in charge of parking, isn't he?
We need him for this.
There is one more, Director Kraut.
Okay, go ahead, please.
So, our, this is just an FYI. We need to redo our memorandum of understanding with, uh, ASME 24031 regarding the meter repair position. This was, um, legislation that was passed O-51-22. You know, auditor is unable to use the MOU as written. Basically, what we need to do is we need to change the wording in the MOU to state that the two parking enforcement officers hired before 12/1/21 will remain at grade A4. And in the MOU that we had signed, we completely scratched out, um, the A4 position. So it needs to, that needs to change. So we'll have to do another signed MOU with the union, and then that will need, um, um, to go through council for.
So council may remember that, um, with the removal of our part, of our meter repair person specifically, we were able to have an additional, and then everybody, this is that whole change. But we tried to fix it by removing that and it actually needs to be put back.
At some point, um, as of December 31st, we'll have, um, one less of the A4s, um, due to a retirement. But at some point, all of our parking enforcement officers will be A5 by the 24031 contract.
Any questions from the committee, other members of council, public administration? Okay, thank you, Director Lucas. We will finish up, um, finance and personnel tonight by talking about some appropriations. Uh, the first one is a, an appropriation of $16,000 to the Police Department. Uh, they are utilizing a KONEX, uh, storage container for evidence that, uh, needs, needs insulation in order to really keep the evidence, um, in the proper, uh, state. And then they also have, um, some additional body camera kits, um, that are necessary. Uh, $12,000 of this is for three more body camera sets. Uh, this includes the tasers and the holsters. And this is for reserves who are working 20 hours per week. Director Stone, anything to add there?
Yeah, um, so it's for full-time personnel, but we have three reserve officers that currently work about, you know, at least 20 hours a week. And we like to keep them, you know, in order to, you know, maintain our coverage. And so we like to not take those body cameras away to give to the new full-time officers when they come in. We like to go ahead and keep, you know, body cameras assigned to those, you know, reserve officers who are working that frequently. So we're, and, and this is a TC 500 expense, um, initially. And then after it's, after it's, they're bought, um, that capital purchase is made, then it's a, it's a, um, you know, sustained, um, subscription that you make to the, to the Axon system. And so the upgrades in the future are part of the subscription. This is the initial purchase that get the systems.
Any questions on this, um, appropriation of the Police Department? Committee, other members of council, public? Okay, moving on, the next item is, um, $55,000 to Parking Enforcement. This is due to increased costs in our, um, you know, our software provider for our new parking meters, IPC. Uh, the reason why there is this increased cost is because we have been receiving so much more tickets. So there is an increase in, um, $115,000, $110,000 in citations and tickets. But that, there is a corresponding fee for each of those tickets within the system, which means that we need to appropriate $55,000 more to Parking Enforcement to cover the costs of these, uh, additional citations and tickets. Members of committee, any questions on that? Members of the.
Any indication of why the, uh, jump in parking tickets?
Yeah, Director Stone?
You know, we've hired, uh, you know, and we're fully staffed now currently with our parking enforcement officers, so that's one reason. And I will say, um, the people on patrol are patrolling. And then the IPS system is set up to where you can identify expired meters remotely. You know, that may be part of it as well, but we've had that, you know, as part of the IPS feature for a while. But it, it's a, you know, it's a pretty active parking enforcement group.
There's more people parking also. There's just more, more use, more activity in the city this year, so.
Member Reisner?
Um, yeah, just a little off, off the topic, but I, I get the, uh, next all, uh, police reports every morning. And I've noticed there's been quite a jump in vandalism of our parking meters or just out and out theft. And I try to figure out why anyone would want to steal a parking meter, but I don't know.
Or how?
Yeah, that's one thing that kind of comes to mind.
We, so we had a, we had a, um, what we believe a single, a single person vandalized several. And I think it was a, I don't know, someone didn't like parking meters, maybe they got a ticket. But I, I, I will double check if we've caught that person yet. I know that there were some leads, um, specifically on, on, on that particular offense. I just don't know if it's, if it's, uh, if we've caught them yet. But, um, uh, to the point about the MOU, you know, our, our meter, uh, enforcement officers, our parking enforcement officers also, under that MOU, also do the repairs. And, and the, the new folks we have on staff are very diligent about, about, um, doing repairs in-house when things become damaged, buying the parts as opposed to just sending it away and having it the contractor fix those. So they're very good.
Right.
Other questions? Okay, the next item is, um, $5,000 to the Garbage Fund, uh, to cover a medical transfer. And I don't have additional information on this. This is from, uh, the Auditor's Office, uh, for 760, which is the Garbage Fund, um, transaction code 100 to cover a medical transfer.
I, I am fairly certain it has to do with when you have an employee that's paid out of the garbage fund, um, that fund pays the medical fund for medical insurance. And so as we've, you know, we, we, um, you know, um, you know, allocated funds to, to pay for the people who are paid out of the garbage fund, um, to have them go ahead and transfer that money to the medical fund for their, their share of health insurance. And there just wasn't enough put in, uh, the budget this year for the garbage personnel.
Okay. Any questions from the committee, other members of council?
That medical fund is an insurance pool, basically, you know?
Okay, and then the next appropriation is, uh, $100,000 to the General Fund Auditor to cover income tax refunds. So we have, um, uh, discussed this, you know, at length. The most recent information I had, uh, from the auditor was that extensions are coming in. They have processed about $93,000 in refunds, and it looks like another $33,000 in the process. This puts us slightly over what we have left in the account line. And she is requesting an additional $100,000. Hopefully it's not all needed, um, but they did just process a $60,000 refund. Any questions on this ongoing appropriation? Other members of council, public, anything to add to the administration? Okay, um, and finally, we have, uh, a somewhat annual, um, uh, ordinance that reduces the 2022 appropriations. This. So this was first introduced a number of years ago because of the, um, an auditor, an auditor of the city, not the city auditor, but somebody who was auditing the city. Uh, in their management letter, uh, made a comment, um, about the city's finances, that when the city appropriates money, we have to have the money available. If we appropriate $100,000 to spend, but we only get $75,000 in revenue, then it looks like we could spend money that we don't have. And the auditors don't want the over-appropriation on the books. Now, the Auditor's Office says that they never overspend, uh, but this ordinance allows the auditor to go in and reduce any appropriations that appear that we could reduce. This is a one-time reduction by the auditor at the. This is a one-time reduction by the auditor at the end of the year. Any questions from the committee on this? Other members of council, public, city administration?
This is a process we go through every year. It also helps us with the budgeting when we're looking at the the twenty twenty-three budget as well as carryover. Sure that our carryover is strong because we've got bills to pay come January fifteenth. So we have to make sure that that's available.
And if there's a if there's a volatile revenue area, revenue line, that maybe we expected to get a certain amount and then appropriated against that. But then, for whatever reason, it didn't come in, that's the point there, that the auditor can just unilaterally go and reduce that appropriation.
It needs an authorization. Okay, thank you. And that ends finance and personnel, President Nysel.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to committee of the whole. One last discussion on the ward boundaries. So you're welcome to come up and sit with us up here. I'll give a little bit of background information. And I know that Service Safety Director Stone has some additional information about this. Some of the recent history on it is is that we did change the ward boundaries in nineteen ninety-one. And then we left, we retained the existing boundaries in two thousand and one. And then in two thousand and eleven, shortly after the next census, then university estates had been added. And so there were some minor adjustments made. Our obligation is to keep those ward districts approximately the same and even population. Also, though, in question with this year's census was that we're at, what, twenty-four thousand nine hundred some seventy-eight people, I think. And we had an increase of seventeen people since the two thousand and ten population. A question that we've or or a fact that we've had some questions about because this census occurred during COVID. And so one of the places, I think, was one of the large apartment complexes only had fifty-six people indicated as as being housed in the apartments. So we do have Ohio Revised Code that offers us that we can change the wards. And we do have the authority to divide the wards and we can do that by ordinance. The question, I think, right now is whether it makes sense to do that right now or to retain the existing boundaries. And I do believe that Deputy Service Safety Director Chicky has uncovered a way in which we can appeal the census count and the application for that appeal would be in June. Mayor Patterson, yes?
Yeah, it's really interesting that the US Census Bureau, I think, is finally recognizing that group quarters could also be applied to to large apartment complexes, especially those in college towns to where we know full well that there's a large number of students living in them. And and President Nysel is correct, or a minor correction. Our population is currently twenty-three thousand eight hundred and forty-nine, but you're right, we grew by seventeen individuals. But Paul Logue really took a deep dive into the census blocks. So we have census tracts, those are the larger swaths. There's eight of them within our census count here in the city of Athens. But then you can go much more granular and look at things by the census block. And he did identify two apartment complexes in particular, one that is typically running at eighty-five percent capacity in a in a unit, an apartment complex that would typically house more than a thousand individuals. Another one that was typically eighty to eighty-five percent capacity as well that was over eight hundred individuals that we live that were living there. The one that was eight hundred, the census block showed up as there being fifty-seven people counted there. And again, we all are well aware that our census count took place smack dab in the middle of a hundred-year pandemic. And so therefore, we we strongly believe that our counts are off. And so with this new turn of events through the Census Bureau, you know, again, as President Nysel was indicating, that Andrew Chicky is going to dig deeper into that to see if we qualify, you know, for contesting it through this mechanism that would recognize and and treat them, like I said, as group quarters that we have at the university with residence halls, they all get tabulated and the information is sent on to the Census Bureau straight through the registrar's office. One success that we did have in twenty twenty, when I was fighting pretty hard with the Census Bureau, was to be able to use the registrar's office for any student who lived off campus and registered that off campus off campus address with the registrar's office. Finally, the Census Bureau did cede to that and said, sure, if you've got that. Unfortunately, it's not necessarily required at a high university to have the the student put anything other than their permanent address through the registrar's office. And sadly, there's no evidence to suggest this, but if that's what's being sent, you know, that it's it's not unforeseeable for that individual to actually be counted elsewhere other than where they're legally supposed to be counted, which is right here in the city of Athens, because it's the census is predicated upon where you lived the majority of your year during a diennial census year is where you get counted.
Questions or comments? Councilmember Spillman and then Councilmember Swank.
Quick, you know, the apartments across from where I live that are coming up now should be done in another, I don't know, several months, certainly by next June. They don't count, is that right?
They will not because they were there was no, this is the twenty twenty census. And so even though it was annexed in and in the future, it will add to the first ward, it certainly is not countable property even in the future. Now, if if we go through this process, but this process doesn't start until after after that is has started to rent and fill up, it could potentially be counted within the census count with a recount. We'll have Andrew Chicky look into that as well.
Councilmember Swank?
Two simple questions. Number one, are the wards in balance now in terms of residents per? And then the second question would be if this if we have to wait till June, we would be talking about the two thousand twenty-five city elections as opposed to the two thousand twenty-three city elections? Because the primary is in May of this year. So we're not really talking about doing anything right away?
No, no, if it goes to more than twenty-five thousand.
Right.
Then the council wards get redrawn.
But what I'm saying is if.
But it's not now.
Yeah, but if Mr. Chicky won't have this information, possibly June, it pretty much renders a twenty twenty-three election a moot point.
No, and I will also say. I'm sorry.
Mayor Patterson. And then Director Stone.
You know, having the insight that I do into how the Census Bureau operates with even a special recount for a community, if we were to go down that path, and and that's a normal standard process for any community that you want to challenge it and it's going to cost you half a million dollars to do so, those counts typically take four to five years to accomplish. So, yeah, I'm with you. I'd shake my head too and just go, yeah, we're this is not going to be something that has any level of of being expeditiously done.
So could I put the question on?
Yeah, sure.
So that said, can we, by this document I look in and I'm looking at in front of me, say, okay, we're gonna have five wards? Could we do that today? Obviously, we have to go through the legislative process. What would allow us to say we need a fifth ward?
Exceeding the population of twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand, okay.
And we're not there.
That's by statute.
Yeah. Any other questions? And Director Stone, you have a comment you wanted to make.
Yeah, just I do. You're you're not tied to the census to make the decision to change. I mean, the census is the typical time that we we do it because that's always, you know, the most accurate. And it's, you know, everyone, it's kind of the gold standard on counting and everybody can point to that. But, you know, if we do this effort and we get pretty good data about where everything is that we submit under this appeal, and it does take a couple of years, and then in the meantime, you know, Chris Shaw Green fills up and we know the count there and we know that that has been annexed since after there is, we could come back to this body and make a recommendation that, you know, we think it's going to come down to this category and we recommend that at this time you pick up redrawing the wards. Whether or not it goes above twenty-five thousand, it goes above twenty-five thousand, that's a big step, right? Because, you know, now you're saying you got to have nine council members and it's a big deal. But say it goes to, you know, twenty-four, seven hundred or something like that, but, you know, the wards are whopper jawed based upon the current. We could, you know, come back to you and make the recommendation, let's go ahead. We recommend you go ahead and redraw the wards and, you know, would give some base maps that we would recommend and then you could work off of that. So I mean, that's how we would approach this, given that we're going to collect data in order to make this appeal that's due by next June.
Other questions, Councilmember Spillman?
Well, I I can't help but mention this when you say five years and however many thousands of dollars because Taylor Sappington did did Nelsonville in a heartbeat and they passed. Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
I'm glad you brought that up. There's a big difference between what the state would recognize versus what the federal government's going to recognize. The federal government's going to recognize the diennial census count. So, you know, what they did was Herculean. I applaud them for what they were able to do to get their count north of five thousand. But bear in mind that if they were to to challenge that at the US Census Bureau level, again, it would require having to pay for a special census to where the Census Bureau sends their team and recruits a bunch of enumerators to go into Nelsonville and do a recount that way. So it was the the Secretary of State that that approved their recount that they did. But it was, I would say it's a local slash state level recount, not a federal recount.
Any other questions or comments? So I'm perhaps sensing that the council members are thinking that that's possible, that just to leave the sense the the ward districts the same right now, to leave the existing ward boundaries, is that what I'm? And and to work with the city administration on the appeal that will come in June?
I would just say to add real quickly that, again, as I've mentioned, you know, the official census shows us growing by seventeen people. Where we're going to try and weave something to where we get those seventeen people corrected if we grew by seventeen people. And the other thing, just to share with council, is is within the diennial two twenty twenty diennial census, we really didn't annex any significant property, unlike back in two thousand and ten when we did annex in university estates. And we did see significant growth with that that development being pulled in. But we'll look at the challenge.
I appreciate the discussion. And if I see that there aren't any other comments, then we will call this an evening at ten twenty-two and I thank you for your patience and we'll see you all next week. No, we will see you the seventh of November because next Monday is a fifth Monday.
Halloween.